Regular meeting and asks for students to leave this in the pledge of allegiance. We don't do the call.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are a couple of reports that have closed session this evening. The first is reporting out a public employee discipline dismissal release. In closed session, the board took action to issue a notice of release to temporary certificated employee identification numbers, seven, six, zero, 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 three, three, seven, two, seven, six, zero, 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 three, three, nine, nine, seven, six, zero, 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 three, six, eight, three, zero, eight, six, seven, six, zero, 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 three, three, nine, two, seven, six, zero, 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 three, two, six, one, seven, six, zero, 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 three, three, one, seven, seven, six, zero, 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 three, two, four, five, seven, six, zero, 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 three, two, four, one, seven, six, zero, 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 three, three, eight, nine, and seven, six, zero, 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 three, three, nine, three, pursuant to ed coded section four, four, nine, by four subdivision B, effective at the end of the 2023-24 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows. Do we name the is five oh? The second is in closed session by a vote of five oh, the board took action to accept the resignation agreement of a certificated teacher. Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt our agenda, please? Any changes or additions in the agenda?
No change.
Thank you. Student vote? All board members on favor? Aye opposed. Carrie's five oh. Thank you. Okay, first, Jim?
This is one of the projects that our students did for the float program. And it's just incredible. It's regarding the fire in 93 that 400 of us lost our homes. And they put together all the newspaper articles and then did some really nice presentations around it. And if you haven't seen it, I would highly encourage you to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have public comment on non-agenda items?
Thanks, President Vickers. Let me check the notations on the cards. I have Mr. McIntosh, you're speaking on a agenda item and a non-agenda item. Okay, and you'll be my first speaker. So you can make your way up. And then I have a comment from Mr. Hills. It looks like you also have a non-agenda item. Okay, you'll be after Mr. McIntosh.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Imagine my surprise when I went to pick up my Laguna Beach and pendant a couple of weeks ago and found the district puff piece bundled with it. And what a piece it is. I immediately realized this was the old, let's put this out, the starter ski week trick. So no one sees it and they will be too busy playing catch up when they come back. It's been done before. It's a ridiculous tactic, but you know, it does work. I was happy to see that it looks like we're getting our money's worth with the $10,000 yearly fee we pay Nish, niche.com. They gave us a top 25A rating. Must be those going reviews they use to rate the schools. I guess niche must have missed the stellar performance in math by last year's juniors to no fault of their own, where only 49.7% of them met or exceeded the state's staff math standards. Your answer to that is to say, well, that's 92 percentile in the state. Really? Who cares about the rest of the state? Who cares about Irvine, Newport, or anybody else? You're the ones who brag about spending 33K per student, and that's the best we can do, 49.7. So if you look up that same class of kids in 2019 when they were in seventh grade, you will see they tested at 71.9%. So what happened to these kids? I know what happened. You let them down and you're letting their parents down. How long are you going to wait and realize your self-teaching team style instruction doesn't work for all kids in all classes? According to the website, US News and World Report, which is a much more reputable site because they don't have a pay per play situation. The good news, though, I did see on there and said the high school has a 90% graduation rate. However, the bad news is they're all just not ready. The college readiness rating for LBHS is 54.4 out of 100. Another dismal number that indicates while kids are graduating, most are not prepared to take on college. We have heard year after year after year, kids head off to college only to return after a semester or two feeling defeated and sad. Obviously, the boilerplate touting about preparing kids for the future is just more district hype and BS. All the while, everyone here continues to pat themselves on the back, keep your hands out for more money. You're failing the kids and the families of Laguna Beach. The fact that dozens of families have left the district for private schools speaks loudly. It's time for a change here at the top. And believe me, people know it. That's why in the past three days, we have received dozens of texts and emails saying it's time to recall the board, take back the district, clean house, and get back to serving of all students of the district, not just a chosen few.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Mr. Hills, you could come forward. And let me just see who, anybody else is making a non-agenda item? I think Mrs. Iseman, you're making a non-agenda item. So you'll be next. Go ahead, Mr. Hills.
Thank you. Jim, it's good to see you. Jim and I keep running into each other all over town. And so I see him almost every day when we're, so we meet again. I just wanted to speak very briefly. You know, we just had International Women's Day. And some of my grandkids are in schools where they were very, had a very active program about International Women's Day. And I think that it'd be fun to look at, looking towards next year to do an International Women's Day that would focus on women in Laguna Beach, both currently and historically, and really focus on the international dimension of Laguna Beach as a place where women are high achievers. And I wanted to talk a little bit about my grandma. My grandma was a suffragette who worked for years in the efforts to accomplish the 19th Amendment, which was accomplished in 1920. She worked for years in Chicago. My grandfather was a lawyer. And when they finally got to the point where they were going to get the amendment and they accomplished their goal, one that she'd been working on for 20 years, my grandfather's reward to her because he was very glad that it finally got done and that he could get his wife back. And to reward her for her work for the women of America, he brought her to Laguna Beach and bought a house here in 1922. The amendment was passed in 1920. And she joined the PTA. She was a PTA mom in the Laguna Beach schools in 1936 when the high school started. And my uncle graduated from Laguna Beach High School in 1942 and went straight to San Ana to the cruders, signed up for World War II. One of the things my grandma did in her retirement was she typed up a bunch of handwritten letters from my great-great-grandmother. And we still have those and I've given them to my daughters. And they had a big discussion. My great-great-grandmother wrote these fantastic letters in 1833 where she talked about the fact that women don't vote and she had some very funny passages about, we don't vote, but we know how to make sure how our men vote. And it was really, really interesting stuff. And so I was just thinking, it would be fun to think about other women like my grandma who were leaders in Laguna Beach and were significant figures in the arts and in local business and whatnot. And next year, when it comes time for International Women's Day, to really do something major here in Laguna Beach. And so I just wanted to throw that idea out there. And if there's anything I can do to contribute to that, participate in it.
Thank you. That's a positive suggestion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hills. I'm going to just look through President Vickers to see because many of these cards are from multiple items. So we have Mrs. Iseman coming up in just a second. And then we have Mrs. Morgan. You have a non-agenda item as well. Okay, is anybody else in the audience wanting to make a non-agenda item comment?
Kelly, we have one coming down.
Oh, one more. Okay. But anybody that just wants to raise their hand? Okay, so it looks like we'll have three more of those comments. And you ready, Victoria? Okay, all righty, go ahead.
I started thinking about something that happened to my son when he was in school here. I got one of those phone calls that parents get, we need to talk to you. So his dad and I went up, he was in third or fourth grade, thought, oh, now what happened? And we sat down and they wanted to let me know that he finally stood up to the bully. There was a bully that was picking on him on the playground and he wasn't doing anything. And he finally figured out how to defend himself. Well, what made me think of that was the feeling about bullies because I haven't seen anything like this in this town. I watched the council meeting on Tuesday and I saw a complete lack of compromise. And when I got home, I mean, phones were just back and forth and the email were coming. And what can we do? Initially, it was recall. And then we found out the detail on a recall. Recall takes a long time and it would come right before the election. So then the next thing is election. The only way, because obviously there is no room for compromise, the only way to get this is to have a three-person person on the count, on your board that will stand up to the administration that is pushing something down our throat, which will mean that we will go for a long time without a swimming pool in this town. We will have construction that will be damaging to the safety of all the residents up here because Park Avenue is going to be completely blocked. You know, when you wear different hats, you look at things differently. And you need to wear the hat of the entire community and recognize, we need a pool. We need a pool. The city's going to do it, but we don't need to have a period of time without a pool. And we also need to take a look at how much money is being spent and who does it serve? So please understand how angry people are. There's not going to be a recall, but there is going to be a change here because you cannot believe what's going on. They may not be emailing you, but they're emailing me.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. Iseman. Mrs. Morgan, you can come on up. And we just see after Mrs. Morgan, we'll have Mr. Thomas come up. Go ahead, Carrie.
So it's always funny because every time issues come up that are worthy of taking time out of our private and personal life to come up and address you, our elected people, that we entrust our students' education, that we entrust the well-being of our community. It must be pretty significant for us to all come up here and take our time. And I'm going to follow along on this idea of bullying and actually veer a little left and say, first of all, for those of you that have made an appearance at Mean Girls, it's so nice to see you there for the first time in a long time. And for those of you that are in it, oh, my God, it's amazing. So if you haven't seen it, I would highly encourage you, not only as staff of the district, but as fans of the students of this community, to make an appearance and celebrate the youth of our community and the hard work that they have done because it is a fabulous show and what they are doing to address bullying and how they are making it tangible and making it something that you can actually wrap your arms around and make it a ballistic conversation, hashtagging it and making it real. And these are kids that are honestly have a lot more bravado and brazen confidence than I think some of you here in this room. Because at the end of the day, I sat in that same city council meeting on Tuesday and told them, you know, I stood here a year ago and told you that this school administration leadership is going to cram this pool down your throat whether you want it or not, without regard to the community, without regard to the fact that there is no plan for what do we do with our swimmers without a pool for three years, two years? What do we do with the tennis players that are going to be playing tennis right next door to all of this dust and debris during the day? How much is it going to cost to relocate all of these people? How about baseball that keeps going ignored? Which is, I think, where you're going to put the administration buildings while you're working on the administration building, but that hasn't been mentioned. This is ridiculous. And it's really disappointing to see that on the very top of your agenda, it says, as your elected officials, we evaluate all perspectives before making decisions that impact our stakeholders. Yet the message that came out of city council was that they worked with the committee, which includes Miss Member Vickers and Member Osborne and Mr. Dr. Valoria. And they said, they are not compromising, they are not flexible, they will not negotiate, they will not consider any design elements that, by the way, serve the community of which you also serve. Stand up. It's time to make a change. I've said that for the 20 years I've stood here before you. Actually, maybe I'm only 14 in front of you. This is long overdue. And as students that have represented what bullying and everything else does, you guys should all come and start taking notes from the show because you've got a lot to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mr. Thomas, you could come up. Victoria, did you want me to wait until you tell people to start? I realize that you've got it. Okay. All righty.
Hi, I'm John Thomas, and I don't have a prepared statement. I tend to pay attention to what goes on at the city. I don't tend to pay much attention to what goes on at the school district. But I was the last two speakers at the city council meeting the other night. And I have to tell you, I was struck by the reaction of a large group of people from the community that were there regarding the pool topic. And it isn't just a pool topic. It was the type of discussion, as has been referred to, between the school district, people representing the school district and the people representing the school. And I heard someone earlier talk about your team approach to teaching. I would think that would be a skill that you would learn. Students would learn in sports and perhaps in school to be good team players. And that certainly wasn't the message that the people in the community were getting, that there has been a discussion between the school district and the city, but it sounded like it was a one-way conversation. It was a monologue rather than a dialogue. And you get as large a share of my property taxes as the city does. You're as important to me as a city. I would just like to see you play a little better in the sandbox.
Any other speakers on non-agenda items? All righty, President Vickers.
Okay, thank you. We start with our reports, and we first have our student board report. Thank you.
All right. Hello, I'll be doing the report for tonight. I'm going to start off with Top of the World Elementary School. It looks like the book fair is currently going on this week. And as I remember from my days, I went to Top of the World. That was one of the most enjoyable activities for me there. I really looked forward to it all the time. And the Jogathon is also on Friday, another thing that I really enjoyed there. And I've heard a lot of positive feedback from both parents and kids. All donations are going towards ameliorating the students' education on the social experience there, which I find to be very moving. I'm glad that that's an established thing in our community. And then we have developments on iReady, reading and math, and as well as ceramic and claywork and dance in physical education. That's all things that teachers were not necessarily trained upon, but talked to on the staff day. So it's nice to see things like arts being instilled at such a young age. As a dancer myself, I appreciate dance being part of PE. And then moving on to El Moro Elementary, we have the Jogathon also occurring on Friday. And those funds are going towards supporting students, things like garden programs, field trips, and classroom grants, which, again, very grateful that that's established here. And then there's also a very fun spirit week this week where kids get to express themselves, show their love for different sports teams, types of music. And I like that we're promoting that type of diversity at such a young age as well. And moving on to Thurston, we have teachers, we're learning how to incorporate ecology and sustainability as we look into being a more green school and green community. That was on the non-student day, the staff day. And I've heard some appreciative feedback from a lot of students, considering many of the students here are big fans of the ocean, big fans of the community we live in. So they're good to see. They're very happy with seeing the work that we're putting in to try to keep that community clean. And then we're also learning how to efficiently integrate AI into the classroom as AI develops, obviously. A lot of kids misuse it for things like cheating on tests, things like that. And we're learning how to effectively incorporate it into our learning and use it as a tool instead of something to take advantage of. And then moving on to my personal favorite, Laguna Beach High School. I'm biased, but as Ms. Morgan pointed out, the Mean Girls musical is going on and I'm one of the lead roles, so I highly recommend it. Thank you, Dr. Valoria, for coming to see it on the staff preview night. I appreciate the support for the arts. Thank you. And we have our student night on Saturday, closing night on Sunday. So if you guys haven't been able to see it, I recommend that everyone comes to it. We also had the LBUSD Career Roundup, which was very successful. We had things from dance to veterinary science to fire science to EMT, multiple different careers, and a lot of students attended. And I heard a lot of positive feedback. I myself, I was representing the dance program and I walked around. I saw some other booths and honestly, it was very eye-opening to see what careers we could really go into after our education because I'm a senior, I'm graduating. So obviously, that whole process to me is a little confusing. And I feel like this event really helped me clarify what path I'd like to take and the process towards it. And then as well as that, college decisions are starting to roll out. There's time morale amongst a lot of students as choices, people begin to pick their futures. And with that, class registration is beginning for underclassmen as well, which is obviously very fun. We're finalizing content in preparation for AP exams this May, so stressful time, but again, very fun. We had a blood drive as well, and that was very successful. We exceeded our goal. I believe it was around 40 units that we needed and we got above 50. So big thanks to the students there who donated. And then ASB had an activity to make gratitude grams for valuable women in people's lives for Women's History Month. And that is all I have for Laguna Beach High School. And St. Patrick's Day is coming up, so Happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. We have CSE representative tonight, Thesa.
Good evening, board members. Busy time of year for us. We just had our first negotiations last week, which was very productive and busy. We have our second one on Monday, where we start getting into the nitty-gritty of our contract. But we got a lot cleaned up last time. We are starting to work on our spring fundraiser for our scholarships with six students applying. And we elected this year as a chapter that we will not be doing our annual CSEA conference every year. We decided there's only two of us that can go. We get two votes, so we decided, since we're such a small chapter and it is a huge financial impact to our chapter, that we would go every other year and that that would be a better use of our funds. And then that way, we can put more funds toward our members and doing the things that improve their lives. So that's all I have, but yeah, busy time. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you. We have a report from our SRO.
Good evening. First and foremost, I apologize for my Batman-sounding voice and battling bronchitis for the past three weeks. Being new to the schools, I'm prone to pick up sicknesses from our kids, obviously, unfortunately. So I'm battling the first of many bouts, I'm sure. But this has been a busy month for us at the SRO division. First and foremost, we did have e-bike safety classes here at Thurston not that long ago. Good turnout. From my understanding, we had to cancel one of the classes, unfortunately, just to sketch a conflict with some of the students. But one of the other classes we had, we had approximately 14 kids come in and learn a little bit about e-bike safety. We also continue to do ride-alongs, including breakfast and afternoon ride-alongs, both doing the donuts and ice cream, not necessarily in that particular order. Continue onward. We also attended the Boys and Girls Club Breakfast, where several of our students attend on their off days as well. And similar to our John Wayne trip, we did another trip with the First Generation Club from Laguna Beach High School at Mission Hospital, which is actually one of our major trauma centers, exploring the possible careers for their future, barring any just regular business. We want to be able to open their eyes to see what else is out there. Want to captivate them. They had the opportunity to speak to registered nurses, one of the doctors there, and a couple of ambulance attendants as well. They also had an opportunity to do a Stop the Bleed class, which taught our students and some of our staff members how to essentially stop bleeding at viral areas, including how to apply tourniquet, which is something that all our officers carry on an everyday basis as well. So I think that's a fantastic thing for our students to learn, especially to spark that interest in the field of medicine. And last but not least, we also attended the Career Fair at Laguna Beach High School. We didn't, we actually pulled all the stops out. We even brought our ATV that we used to patrol the trails on the beaches and drove it into the gym next to our booth, which caught a lot of eye and attention, especially when my partner turned on the lights and siren every few minutes. We also brought in some breaching tools, some of the tools we use on warrant services, and brought several officers, including detectives, to talk about the different portions of our field. That's all I have for you for now, but again, I apologize, sounding like Batman. And I've been absent a couple of times just because I don't want to spread the germ, so to speak. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. You will get, develop immunity.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Have a fantastic evening.
And next is Dr. Valoria.
Good evening. It's been a busy several weeks since we last met. We had eighth grade family night at the high school. It was a great turnout. We had the Career Fair, as has been mentioned. And special thanks to Kelly Shear and the team for putting that on. It's quite an event. I think that we had a lot of the CCA classes that we offer represented there, as well as a lot of different industries around. And so it's great to get a chance to walk around. And as Chase mentioned, our PTAs have been very busy hosting different fundraisers. I think the high school is doing their unfundraiser, which is the easiest one, right? But the Jogathons are ongoing and so appreciate PTAs' work. It's a lot to put on those events. We also had eighth grade science camp. And thank you again to the board and to school power for helping, help get our students up there. And this is the, you know, we had several years where students weren't able to go. And so we're playing a little bit of catch-up. So as our eighth graders went typically to sixth grade trips, so we've done sixth grade and eighth grade. And again, special thanks to Joe Fadell and his staff for going up there. I know it takes a lot to go spend two nights with a bunch of young ones. The, again, mentioned Mean Girls Chase, the students are just fantastic. If you get a chance to go, I really highly recommend it. They also did a quick show as well, Eighth Grade Family Night. So a lot of our incoming families were able to see it as well. And so again, just a lot of stuff going on. Obviously, the community port went out, as has been mentioned. Just for the record, we don't pay NISH for anything. Just want to make sure that that's clear to the board. And other than that, I know the rest of the staff will have other updates as well because there was a lot of things going on that I don't want to take theirs, so.
Thank you. Go to our cabinet members. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. I'll be brief. We had a very good turnout. I know we've talked about the optional staff safety training that we held last Saturday for the active violence emergency response training. We officially had 41 attendees all completing the training. So that's a very, very significant portion of our staff, representing over 10% of our total employees. It was about a five-hour training. And I just really want to express my appreciation to the board for prioritizing safety. It's gone over very well. We already have requests to offer trainings like that in the future. And so I'm sure we will. And again, I just really appreciate your support for allowing us to do that at Laguna Beach High School on Saturday. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you, President Vickers. I'll be brief. We are in the midst of negotiation season, so I appreciate the relationship with CSEA and the BUFa. It's very collaborative and we've had one session with each team. Next week, we have day two, so we enjoy that process to work towards some common agreements. And we did have a very successful non-student day, the teacher professional development day this past Friday. It was amazing getting on all the campuses and seeing the amazing works. Kudos to the principals for putting on that day, and that'll be all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meberry.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a great day last Friday. I think we had over 35 sessions, with nearly all of them facilitated by our own staff across all four schools. So a lot going on, great career round event. Mean Girls is wonderful. We also had our fourth graders out there doing the, with Jeff Sewell, with Laguna Pioneer Painting Association paintout. I mean, just couldn't have been a better day for them when they were doing it two weeks ago now, I think it was. Top of the World students were up at Alto Laguna and with Sarah Wolsey and their teachers. And our Elmore students were at Reef Point with Kamala Stevens and the teachers there. So it was just a wonderful day, wonderful pictures and paintings that came out of that. And then recently, And then recently, I also just wanted to thank the board. Gloria Hardwood, our coordinator of environmental literacy and myself, went to the National Green Schools Conference, which is put on by the US Green Building Council's Center for Green Schools and it was just great to see all the different work that different institutions and schools and independent schools are doing and how we align with that on the facility side as well as in the classroom. And it's exciting to see all the, to see, to recognize that, okay, we're, we're doing a lot of stuff. But there's also some other stuff that we can do and some connections we can make to line. So it was really good just to see that all come together across several other schools that we were able to network with. And then lastly, I just want to say, Dr. Kennerberg and I, we're excited to share that thanks to the board's support and our work around MTSS. That's been a very high priority for the district the last four or five years, coming out of the pandemic, the I-Ready National Leadership or California Leadership Summit was last week and they asked us to talk about our, our process for MTSS and how we align our goals and how we align our resources. So we were guest panelists there for that. And so that was really exciting to share the work that our staff is doing with the support of the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you know, are they planning to have one of those showcases of the pioneer paintings that they've done sometimes in the past? I don't.
I think a lot of, some of the work is going to be at our upcoming celebration of the arts. There should be some of that there for sure.
Thank you. I also had a question though. Do you go out with your performances to the elementary schools? I don't know if they still do that.
No, we did do a preview during the career fair. Yeah. And then we've also done a tutorial preview, but we haven't traveled up to the separate schools.
We have principal's report for Thurston from Mr. Vadel.
Good evening, board. I'd like to acknowledge how thankful I am to be here on behalf of the Thurston family as a lot of the great work that we're doing together, but I also wanted to recognize how difficult it is to prepare such a presentation for everyone, knowing that there's a lot of great things that are happening and I know that in some aspects I won't be able to capture all of it. But with that said, what I do hope you all leave with is a good understanding of the big ideas. And most importantly, the process that we take as a learning community to develop solutions to problems of practice as educators. In previous presentations, I highlighted the importance of developing shared leadership and creative think tanks to build ownership and momentum of a lot of the work that we do on our campus, especially around goals and initiatives. Whether that's behavioral, academic, or a social emotional focus and how these teams work together alongside me to review data, take inventory of the positive and negative outcomes of our work and also look for opportunities to ensure continuous improvement across our school. So as I go through my presentation, I will do my best to highlight the process as much as I do the numbers to help provide a sense of the balance of work that's involved, as well as why it's so important to celebrate the work along the way. As we look at our LCAP goals and how they influence our school actions, I'm honored to share about some of our enhancements with our universal instructional practices, looking through the lens of our learner profile. Our improvement efforts around ELA and math interventions. Our newfound tutorial model and how we're about, I think, approaching iteration nineteen point O and how it's led to some improvements on how students feel about themselves as well as how they feel about their academic progress. For goal two, I'm excited to share how our behavioral team use improvement science to increase positive reinforcement and reduce behavioral referrals by sixty-three percent. And discuss how increased school-based counseling support has improved services we provide for students in all tiers. And most importantly, how it's shifted from a reactive nature to more of a proactive nature in supporting all of our kids. And finally, for goal three, I felt it would be important to and appropriate to share a moment of silence as we look to honor the establishment of our newfound appearance standards and how it's helped us garner trust among the community, transform our approach from punitive practices into educational opportunities for our kids and create equity with something that used to be a very thorny topic. I will also share about attendance and chronic absenteeism and how we've brought them back to pre-pandemic levels. And as a hopeful starting point and look at ways in which we can briefly discuss some of our amazing but very humbling and reflective practices where we as staff members disguise ourselves as students and do our best to behave and maintain our student stamina during a, what we call a shadow of student day. So let's take a quick gander at our instructional practices and looking through the learning profile and the countless hours that went into creating LBUSD's North Star. Our staff spent time diving into the framework for the future and generalizing how they as teachers currently develop these skills and attributes outlined within this document. They then partner with teachers in and across departments in the district and looked for ways to share best practices in the development of, sorry, hold on one second. In the development of those learning experiences and curated a list of draft learning experiences that would help foster these skills that we want our students to embody post-middle school and post-secondary education. This process continued through several rinse and repeat cycles, and although it's still in its draft form, is now being used in observation tool within our district level design team. And when teachers observe teachers, which we know is learning walks, to help strengthen the structure of our Friday PLC meetings and lesson designs and even as a reflective tool within our evaluation process. Developing these learning experiences was the immediate entry point that we all needed to make the learning profile tangible for all of us and provides us the momentum we now need in the years ahead. So I look forward to sharing this as we continue to develop it. In addition to those learning experiences, we've also set the stage for other actions that look to enhance the love of reading with our work around literature circles, book bites, and some future tinkering with Beanstack. Book clubs came from teachers attending professional development at UCI's Writing Project. And the book that was shared was around four essential studies written by Penny Kittle and Kelly Gallagher. And the goal to book clubs is to establish book clubs in every ELA class that aims to develop students' love for reading, which can also, of course, in turn enhance student engagement, student choice, and literary analysis through flexible and a structured framework. This newfound practice would enhance our current level of reading and our department will be using an upcoming department day to collaborate on getting this started over the next month in hopes of providing some momentum to be a consistent and ongoing practice going into next year. For book bites, it's also being piloted within our ELA classes. And since its implementation in fall, we've seen a forty percent increase in the number of books being checked out in the library from six hundred and thirteen at this point in the year to eight hundred and fifty-one books as of this point in this week. And with book bites and quoting Mr. Warren, students rotate through the library during English and they're told to start shopping. Once given the signal, the students will then use a Destiny Discovery app to explore the various genres of books that we have in the library in order to find a love connection. And if you don't find love at first bite, you keep on hunting, as Mr. Warren says. Especially, or essentially, once students find their love, they preview the book, they develop a list of questions about that they have about the book, find a notable quote, create a brief digital summary of their findings and then share it with the rest of Thurston's community of readers, which in turn creates a bank of book reviews created by students for students. Beanstack is also on the verge of liftoff, where students are celebrated for their love of reading. Mr. Warren describes it as a Fitbit for reading, where the platform tracks the number of minutes students read independently. So we have a lot of great things that are building momentum around independent reading across our campus. Aside from reading, our STEAM teachers are currently investigating ways to enhance their engineering and design units. And we'll be using one of their upcoming PLC inquiry cycles to investigate products and units from Project Lead the Way, Demco, and Flynn, just to name a few. And of course, you sprinkle in the star power of exceptional educational leaders like Mike Morrison and Gloria Harwood with lesson series design and environmental literacy. And you foresee a lot of spontaneous innovations that are occurring across our campus and the revamping of new units that increase student engagement, bolster best-first instruction, and increase more relevancy with real-world problem solving. So thank you for investing in those resources as they do have a direct impact on student learning and continue to make it fun. As we look at interventions, these two evolved since my last year-end report. We now have a flexible tutorial model where students can get immediate subject-specific support. And we've seen a change in how our interventions operate and the types of students they serve. Before, the classes were a mix of ability levels based on parent participation rates. And now they're reserved for students with the highest level of needs. And now operating by design, we see similar growth in I-Ready in terms of years, coupled with a slight uptick in the range of time in which the average length of the intervention takes place, which ranges from nine to eighteen weeks of direct support. And thus far, the classes have helped support approximately sixty students with a near even distribution of students across the different platforms. Our tutorial model has made some big headway after spending some time creating a vision and mission statement and researching various tutorial models and best practices. We've created some rules of engagement around academic support, enrichment, and classroom extension activities. We've also created weekly data reports that we provide to our teachers so that they have easy access to live grades as well as balance their enrollment numbers with the sessions that they are offering. From direct invites for reteaching and intervention to what students would be eligible for, for independent outdoor learning, behavioral in groups, enrichment groups, subject priority weeks, and many other options. In all honesty, it's been a ton of work, but we also recognize the value of having this time here on our campus. And we wanted to make sure in the early onset that we were building positive associations with tutorial in order for it to remain intact and be used as a flexible tool, tool to support students during this very vulnerable time and developmental growth. So every Tuesday during advisement, our students opened their Chromebooks, sign into Flex and either sign up for an array of menu items, which you can see here from drone club, gardening, chess, outdoor study hall, student clubs or career talks, or they realize that they've received a direct invite from one of their teachers for reteaching, makeup work, project support, or some level of executive functioning or behavioral support led by our counseling team. Amazingly, we've created unique learning spaces in every available spot on our campus. And so much that it's hard to find any sort of real estate to add anything else, but which is a good problem to have. And thankfully for these efforts, we have great results to lean on. Looking at some of our student survey results, it comes as no surprise that young teens are motivated to be with their friends. It's also pretty uplifting to see the numbers of students who felt supported by their teachers during this time, where they go for their most academic support, how many actually register before their advisement class and given the opportunity, and where they see the most academic improvement as a result of their tutorial. But I would say the biggest surprise was their rating and their overall rating about their satisfaction levels. And I think that you could all agree that receiving an A grade from a group of middle schoolers who tend to be a judgy and moody group is a pretty good success indicator. But just putting it this way, it's probably one of the highest scorings I've ever seen from our students and I believe that we're trending in the right direction. Knowing that we have these supports like ELA and math intervention in the background, as well as this tutorial support, I wanted to transition a bit over to our universal screening. I've outlined the number of students who shifted from our first diagnostic to our second diagnostic. And we recognize that we will continue to see trends like this as students are exposed to grade level curriculum throughout the year. And as we know, exposure and practice will build proficiency. And here we see we have a reduction of forty-four students in tiers two and three and an addition of forty-five students in tier one for English Language Arts. Diving deeper into tier two and tier three for our ELA's second diagnostic, we also see we have thirty-seven students being directly supported through individualized educational plans, nearly thirty designated with designated ELA intervention classes. And with the remaining sixty-three having support touchpoints through our rotating tutorial model and direct invite referral system. Similarly, with math, we see students moving in the right direction as they're being exposed to the grade level content. And here we see a reduction from tier two and tier three by forty-eight students and an increase in tier one by fifty-one students. As we dive a little bit deeper into the maths diagnostic two, we had thirty-eight students being directly supported through individualized education plans. And again, nearly thirty students, twenty-seven to be exact, supported through designated math intervention classes with the remaining students getting support through tutorial. And the student survey data shows that math has been rated number one and where students get the most support during that time. As we look at the multi-year comparisons and broadly at a school level, we see similar trends of growth from one diagnostic to the next, year after year. And in most cases, within one percent of each other. And what we do know is that the trend will continue to show growth, especially as our students and staff establish strong routines throughout the year, year after year. Looking at cohort-specific information, we see strong trends of improvement in our seventh and eighth grade groups, which makes sense. Since this year, we have prioritized those two particular grade levels in our intervention classes. And even for sixth, even though we see a slight difference between their diagnostic two performances, we see a history of gains following their diagnostic two when they have their end of the year scores. In math, we are noticing slight differences in where our cohorts were last year from this year. And our routine is typically to look at this midpoint data that we get from our second diagnostic, look for common themes and needs from our students, as well as make new recommendations for our math intervention courses, which will occur here in the next few weeks. As we dive into goal number two, I will briefly review some positive work we have around our school-wide behavior practices and with how our additional counseling support were able to increase supports in all of our tiers. Modeling our collective commitments to continually improve, our behavior committee reflected on last year's practices and outcomes, celebrated successes and took inventory of unintentional outcomes and then developed a fishbone diagram that highlighted areas of improvement. Some of those examples were noticing that there was limited communication between teacher and student. There was issues around fidelity when it came to positive reinforcement among staff. And then we also recognize that there is lost instructional time when students were transitioning back and forth and learning about potential consequences that they received. So by pinpointing and studying the various issues, we avoided applying mismatched shiny solutions and in turn we revamped our staff procedures to emphasize positive reinforcement and teacher-to-student communication, which you see here to the right. As a result, we were able to see a consistent decrease in referrals per day since its implementation in late October with nearly a reduction of sixty-three percent with green indicating last year's referrals per day versus blue, which is this year's referral rates. In reviewing counseling supports, I can't say enough about how much we appreciate this, the district's advocacy and support around mental health and college career readiness. Your investment in making social emotional learning a foundation for all of our kids is a model I believe other districts should follow. And I'm proud to boast to my other colleagues that are in the industry about our robust approach, especially having some of the best counselor-to-student ratios in the galaxy. Because of this investment, our counselor supports have shifted from a reactive tier two and tier three triage-type model to a proactive model that has added additional layers to our universal practices and enhanced many of the solution-based approaches at tiers two and three. Prior to the opening of each school year, our counseling team meets to establish goals and action plans for the upcoming year. And during Wave Rider Day, they also distribute a needs assessment to help tailor their goals to meet the community's needs. The themes that rose across the stakeholders were looking at developing study skills and organization and also helping students deal with stress and developing appropriate coping strategies. And with this frame, as well as with the information they collect from the StrengthsFinder, Skills, Personality, and Learning Personality and Learning and Productivity Assessments from NAVYANCE, they weave this information and guide it into their one-to-one meetings with students and within their classroom lessons, which have tripled. Thus far, counselors have met with all sixth and seventh grade students for their one-to-one meetings and are now shifting to support our eighth grade students as they go and prepare for their high school registration and transition process. At tier two, it has been very powerful to have them participate in our attendance meetings as well to help emphasize our solution based approaches to overcoming attendance barriers and the influx of students that they've been able to support in small groups, including executive functioning groups, behavioral mentorships, and even new platforms like our counseling corner during our tutorial period. The team has also been able to expand the number of students that are supported by our pals peer tutoring, which has now served up to fifty-nine students thus far during our tutorial. And finally, goal three, appearance standards, attendance and shadowing students. Over the last twenty-four months, I've learned more about middle school dress code and trends than I've ever wanted to know as a parent and now administrator. It's been exhausting but rewarding. We went through another rigorous improvement science process that reviewed historically marginalized data showing that females were ten times more likely to be dress coded than boys. And through this process, we interviewed numerous stakeholders of the community to collect their experience and perspectives on dress code, researched national trends regarding equity issues experienced across the nation, and how schools should approach best practices that would restore the balance while educating all stakeholders about the values that we wish to uphold at our school. The result was that the appearance standards that you see there to the left. And in short, we shifted and supported self-expression. And we also wanted to create and develop collective commitments that we would maintain confidentiality and operate from a place of respect and understanding when navigating the sensitive topic, including same gender educational discussions when possible. The outcomes have been very positive, most notably around the trust and support that we receive from our community around this, parents, students and staff. And was very closely followed by the changes in correction, which is that we had more educational conversations than we did punitive approaches. And as uncomfortable as it was for me to navigate this problem, it was probably one of the most rewarding experiences that I had as an educator working through equity issues in education. Another notable success is the amount of work that we've done in shifting our chronic absenteeism to pre-pandemic levels with a strong emphasis on ongoing communication, hundreds of calls and letters, and the vast number of solution based meetings that we have with families to help support in the reduction of these particular numbers. And finally, saving one of the best for last, shadowing a student. As adults, we often forget what it's like when we were students and we do our best to try to think like a kiddo and and project maybe what they need to be successful. But we all know that we've been indoctrinated into adulting and often bestow those values and ideas upon our kids. And our solution, you know, and our solutions don't always match the problem. So as I looked at the numerous things our school has accomplished over the last few years and the number of practices we instituted on behalf of the best interest of kids, it was fairly jaw dropping. From block schedules to advisement and tutorials, to intervention classes, to middle school sports, to restorative practices, PLC and best first instructional practices, behavioral rules and positive reinforcement, and the stressful list goes on and on. And the data, the numbers, they do tell one part of the story. But being a kid for just one day is a whole other level. It's about as close as you can get to a direct experience that I think you could think of. And we are doing it, we will continue to do it, and it is very, very insightful. The first cohort of teachers assembled into a four-part inquiry cycle where we discussed Stanford University's structure for authentic and an authentic experience. And we did our best to remove all assumptions about the day. We discussed doing everything a student does to immerse ourselves into the role. I got a ninety-three percent on my math test that day, but I also nearly threw up playing, doing PE lacrosse in the rain. You can cue the violins. Following the bell to bell observation, we also, all of the people that participated, created a hack or a solution to solve a problem that we discovered during that observation and learning experience. Some of the findings that we found were that we were all definitely overstimulated. We were also very surprised at the high levels of engagement that our students were exposed to during a ninety-minute block of time, which made us think more about how we could institute more brain breaks and out more outdoor learning spaces for our kids. And then we also talked a little bit about how we need to shift our technology usage to incorporate more immediate feedback loops, including making student projects more readily available for peer-to-peer feedback or even more broadly, our community feedback. And then we also want to continue to enhance our work in developing the learner profile and learning and experiences as we tinker and observe one another. And I think we also learned that we want to have stronger communication systems for our substitute teachers who often act on behalf of our our staff who might be out and ways in which we can help support them during their time in our classrooms. By the way, I had the cafeteria lunch. It was amazing. So in conclusion, a lot of fun and exciting things that I feel like we have the right momentum with and to build upon moving forward. And I thank you for allowing me to speed through and share a lot of big ideas with you tonight.
Thank you. Remember questions, comments?
Well, I have, thanks. That was a great report, really informative and, you know, very happy with a lot of the work at Thurston. So that's terrific. I have like three sets of questions, so I'm just going to do one and then we'll go around. I think the one I want to start with, I have some ELA questions, but I of course was drawn to the math page, which I know we're looking at different cohorts here. But it also, unless I'm reading it wrong, it appears that, you know, there's a pretty significant drop from scores in the six-year cohort to the eighth grade cohort in tier one. And I would imagine that a lot of kids, you know, math gets harder. Kids decide they don't want to do advanced math anymore for grade reasons or whatever. But I'm wondering if there's anything else to think about in terms of that and whether or not it's possible to keep more kids kind of engaged with advanced math. I don't know. What is the dropout rate? I'm not even sure. So anyway, that was a lot, but I just wanted to talk about it a little more.
Yeah, no, thank you. I mean, we did notice some similar trends with our with our math. You know, we are hoping that with more flexible periods like tutorial and these newfound rules of engagement that we've established, that we're going to capture more and more kids for reteaching concepts. But I do think too that, you know, our math, our math team is probably the strongest department that we have here on our campus in in regards to following through with the routines and authentic PLC inquiry cycles about looking at student data and then reteaching in their classes and then also looking for extended opportunities. So I am very hopeful that that we will continue to see these trends grow over time, especially with these newfound supports. I'd probably be a little bit more anxious if it was more of a sit and watch approach that we're kind of taking. But I know that we mobilize very quickly when we see types of things like this. And definitely will continue to look for opportunities to strengthen that support and skills for our students.
Again, fabulous report, Mr. Fadell.
Thank you.
I was looking at a lot of good things, but the tutorial part, could you explain a little bit more about the enrichment for that?
Sure. So essentially, when you're starting a tutorial model, one of the biggest concerns that I had when we started was it would just be a replication of last year in which it was pretty much a rotation of study hall that would happen class after class. And what we found upon its initial establishment is in this year was that we saw teachers really wanting to try new things for enrichment activities. I think on the list of whether it was chess or whether it was academic pentathlon clubs or drone clubs, which have been support for school power, things like that, that kids could find other ways to extend their learning and also kind of follow their passions and interests. Recently, though, one of the things that we have been monitoring is that the DNF list, and so I was talking to you about the live day that we send to teachers and wanting to make sure that kids take care of those types of pieces first before they go on into enrichment activities. So we're now seeing a little bit more of a blend of, we have great enrichment activities, but a higher level of rotation of getting direct support for students. We also have career talks and speakers that come in to help provide kind of a frame for what the future might look like for them, very similar to the high school. We're also exploring music, cultural music enrichment that's coming through. And so they came in our first year during tutorial. And so there's another opportunity for that to happen too as well. So it's a blend. It's a long list of different things for enrichment, but I'm happy to dive in a little bit deeper if you want to know more about it.
It sounds fabulous. You've come a long way with that.
I'm telling you, yeah, it's pretty nice to be, see what's happening on our campus.
Thanks, Joe. This was a great report. I don't, I don't have any questions for you, so I'll just kind of ramble through my comments because they're fast. But on the counseling, you know, for everybody in the room, the statewide average in California is one counselor for five hundred students. So we are funding and staffing this model at nearly three times the statewide average. And I see just all the amazing things that you're able to accomplish with that. And why wait for high school, right? Why not have all those one-on-ones in middle school and develop those pathways and get them either into interesting CTE classes or into advanced math pathways, but all that takes counseling. You know, middle schoolers are not necessarily that proactive with their educational outcomes because they're thirteen, they're fourteen, they're fifteen, they're, you know, college is a long ways away. So I think that's really important. On the Shadow a Student Day, I really appreciate the fidelity of this project being based on that Stanford model. You know, the feedback loops, like what we're actually getting out of that, I could see the value of that. And I really hope you guys continue to do that and mix in different staff over the years to come. And on the MAC cohort information, that was really interesting data. And I I kind of link it back to remember Perry's question on the flex. Because what I've observed about that is you're really teaching those kids how to take responsibility and agency for their own improvement. You know, so when a kid is struggling in a subject, they now actually have a time in the middle of the school day to go try and improve themselves. And it's kind of on them to get into math tutorial with their sixth grade math teacher. And that is teaching them really valuable lessons. And the fact that they don't know that that's happening because they still really like it and they're giving you a ninety percent of people rating is is just remarkable that you guys are able to pull that off. So kudos to you. I think all of those linked together and I really appreciate what you're doing at this site. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So one more thing, I was also really excited to hear about the reading changes that you're making. One of the questions I had about it is I know it sounds like you're building this to begin possibly next year. Are these kind of ELA curriculum revisions that the school is doing? Like, I don't think the state requires like book reading in that sense, right? The requirements for ELA. And so I'm wondering if we're kind of thinking more holistically about ELA at the school and whether or not like these reading groups would factor into like requirements at all three grade levels, or are they more sort of separate or enhancement to what's the regular part of the curriculum? Did that make sense?
Yeah. So we definitely, I mean, we're still going to be keeping the core novels of study, looking for areas in which we can have stronger alignment. We're also looking to add these to all the particular grade levels, which, you know, feels required when you're participating in your class and you're having discussions about it through the structured framework. And we're also looking to do that this year and not next year. So I know that they're going to be talking about it in their upcoming department day in a few weeks with the idea that everybody starts this year and has at least one book to go through during this process so that we have some good momentum and starting for next year.
That's fantastic. Thank you. I just want to add that the tutorial thing is great. I mean, I know my own kid uses that regularly for both enhancement, but also like, you know, I want to learn how to do this math problem. So I think it's terrific.
Thank you.
I agree with all the comments that have been said so far. It's really a great report. It all fits together nicely. And I always like your pictures. I'm just impressed that artistic skill that you have. Goal three is one of my favorites as far as safe, equitable and inclusive schools. And I'm so glad that we're getting our absentee rate down, particularly in the chronic area. And I was just really impressed with the appearance standards and what you've learned there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I would agree with Jim. It's quite a task to take on the appearance standards over the years. That's something that comes up regularly. And it's challenging at best, but I think that you did a great job on that. And I see that's quite changing your attendance. And that's something, as Dr. Kelly said, that has been a focus district wide, especially coming out of pandemic and having students return and and keep coming back. Have you had any students wanting to shadow you after you've shadowed them?
They haven't. Well, actually, following with it, they're like, how do we get involved in this? How do we, how are we chosen? You know, it was a bit of a lottery in some sense, but we have, I don't know, I think we're going to be planning on doing another session here in the, I think, two weeks from now. And we're going to go through another review of trying to find students with mixed demographics to get a good idea of all the different experiences on our campus. But it was interesting. They they actually truly enjoyed it. So I, I don't know if they want me to be shadowing them, but I definitely know they're excited about somebody doing it.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of comments to, not more questions for you. I, I love that it seems like you're emphasizing more independent reading. And that's what we want as adults. And like Clerk Osborne said, the shadowing and following that model looks like it was really successful. And I think all the board members should do some shadowing.
Come on down.
You speak for yourself. That's a lot of hours.
Yeah, it looks more glamorous on the slide, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah. And you should also know that I heard Mr. Vidal ran during tutorial. What was it like a mile or two that you had to do because someone was making, that kid was making up a tutorial? Very impressive.
For some reason, I had PE and then right after that, my student just happened to be the one that signed up for making up the mile run. So lucky me, right after that, I went right after eating the lunch. I went in and ran a mile and a half. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I had to present because I had one more comment on the appearance standards. It's just community feedback, Mr. Vidal. So every time the appearance standards has come up, you know, and remember Valchesci and I, we have middle schoolers. So we have a lot of friends where it comes up regularly. They always commend your approachability and your willingness to listen and your level headedness. And for an administrator, that must be incredibly hard. And when I send them back to you to keep sharing their ideas or sharing what's troubling them or sharing if you've changed something and how that's rolling out and how you might still want to hear their reaction. This is very much a student and a parent thing combined. The parent's the one that lets them out of the house or maybe physically drops them off. And, you know, then the dress code thing happens. So what a gift and an art you had. And I really appreciate you being open to the community in that way and making them feel.
Thank you. I definitely know I don't have all the answers, so it's good to listen and see it might be out there.
Thank you.
Great job. Remember, you asked a question and while he was responding to questions, I looked up a few things and you asked a question about math and I think the math kind of the advanced pathway and how kids stay in it. And, you know, so we've looked at that over the years. And one of the things we find is they actually pretty much stay in the math pathway, the advanced pathway. So like the current eighth grade group, about a third of them are in that advanced pathway. The current sixth grade group are actually about fifty percent are in that pathway. So we've, over the years, we've seen kind of different cohorts and numbers go in. But once they're in, we find, we don't find that they necessarily drop out to that extent. So I think what we're seeing a little bit of with the sixth grade group in particular, you see a little bit of divide in terms of their their achievement levels right now. And I think you've got a group that are in an advanced pathway. And there's the group that was still struggling through potentially some loss of learning that we are trying to recapture. So it will be interesting to see if we can continue to maintain the fifty percent because that's a very high percentage of students in an advanced math pathway, which is good. They're in there and they're doing well. And it seems as though once they're in, they stay and they maintain. And I think that's, that's just a, the question is what we haven't tracked. the question is what we haven't tracked. And I think it's a good thing for us to consider to look at is what's the trajectory when they get to high school? And what, what's their pathway there? Because the middle school seems to be keeping them in their pathway. But then obviously when they get to high school, they have a lot more choice and on ramps and off ramps. And that's what we also try to provide students as opportunities. So I think it's a great question. We can dig in and give more report on that.
One of the things that makes me wonder, I'm not promoting any sort of idea, but it's something I think about in terms of whether or not there's utility since not that many kids drop out in promoting more kids getting into it in the first place. Because I know that there are kids who just test into it and then there are a lot of kids who opt into it. And I feel like it, I don't know the answer to this. There's a lot of debate about what the right thing to do is. But it does make me wonder about whether there's utility in boosting the confidence of a lot of kids by putting 50 or 60% in. And if we know that they're not going to opt out, it seems like it's sort of a raising of the excellence level for kids who wouldn't necessarily be in tier one, but might end up getting there if they had that opportunity to be brought up. So.
Do Dr. Verlory, do we still have legislative risk on the table though, for the potential bill that was floating out there about these advanced pathways prior to ninth grade? Maybe it's a follow-up question for Dr. Mayberry. But there was talk at the state level of eliminating these advanced pathways from an equity lens in the state. So that's something to consider if we go down one path of really opening it up. And then all of a sudden the state has a different idea about what they want for our Laguna Beach students.
Now, right now that's, I mean, there's research that they are sharing around both, both whether you have that or don't have it. But that's all left up to the local schools right now.
Thank you.
We have several public hearings in our next section. Our first is a pub, public hearing amendment to 2023, 24 negotiated agreement with the California Schools Employee Association, CSA, and it's Laguna Beach chapter number 131 in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code 3547.5 and CCR title five, section 15449. Let's like to open the public hearing. Any comment?
Yes, this is a agenda item 7A. And there's not a lot of numbers on these. So if anybody wants to speak on 7A, even if you wrote a card, you need to come forward? No? Okay.
Did we have a card specifically for that?
No, but some people have topics, but not an agenda item. So I just want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. 7B, public hearing amendment to the 2023, 2026 negotiated agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association, Lufa, in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code 3547.5 and CCR title five, section 15449. Open the public hearing.
I have no cards with this agenda item.
Thank you. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing. And 7C is public hearing amendment of the 2023, 2024 compensation proposal with non-represented classified and certified employees in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213 slash 1991, government code 3547.5 and CCR title five, section 15449. Open the public hearing.
President Vickers, I have no comment cards with agenda items 7C. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this?
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And move to section eight, action items, business services, 8A, approval of positive certification of second interim report 2023, 24. Do we have public comment on this item?
On 8A?
Yes, inner second interim.
Nope, I have no comments. Oh, no, I do have an 8A. Cherry Morgan, you have marked 8A. Can you come to the podium, please?
Okay, good. I'll let you get organized. I'll wait patiently over here while I get organized.
All right, go ahead, Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions that can come back around for an answer. So you're approving this positive certification interim report, but when I'm looking at it, in the, you have two documents attached. The first one is the certificate interim report itself, where you have the yeses and the nos, not this one that you attached, but the one that you didn't attach. And the very first criteria or the second criteria is projected enrollment for any of the current or two subsequent fiscal years has not changed by more than two, 2% since the first interim. And this indicates that you've met that. But when you look at the SCGA housing report, it indicates, and then you look at the annual report and then enrollment, it indicates that last year, just for example, at the high school, for example, enrollment was listed as 950 students. And this year it's listed at 880. So if my math support help helps me with math correctly, that's a 7% change in enrollment. So just at that school alone, we've had a change of enrollment that doesn't meet this criteria. So I think that's a missed, maybe just an editing mistake that you need to correct. And then the other item that I had a question on is in your report. And this actually comes back to comments that were made on the October 13th, 2023 board meeting, or maybe it was the 12th, where there was a lot of discussion about prioritizing the different projects. And President Vickers, you were very clear when various members of the board were asking about these items that were going to be coming back for consideration on as far as the capital improvement projects in the 10-year facility plan. You made it very clear that it would be the staff that would be determining the order of priority based on when funds were going to be released, the order of priority based on impact, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm just really curious because one of the items that is on the second interim report is a $1.3 million capital outlay for the theater for lighting and upgrades. And so I'm curious as to when that's going to happen and what's involved in that, because I don't see a contract for that in any of these business service items, item E and F, one is for classrooms at Almoro and top of the world, and the other is for the pool. And so one of the big conversations was about making sure, and one of the other items that you have to check in here is to make sure that you have this funding laid out.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Are there any other speakers on 8A?
Okay, thank you, President Vickers. If I could, I could, I think I'm going to answer those questions in my presentation. However, the change in enrollment that's on the standard and criteria form that is automatically generated, generated through our standardized account code software. And it's looking at changes from first interim report to second interim report in the same fiscal year over the two subsequent years as well. So you're really looking at a change in enrollment over three months, the same year. So if it changed more than that in the same year. So I hope that clarifies that. Okay, so you'll note tonight that there are very minor changes in our second interim report from our first interim report. And this very first slide is just a reminder of the process. In interim reporting, if we recall, is done twice a year for us. Budget is adopted in June for this first fiscal year. And we bring back first interim with the adjustments for the adopted budget. And we did that in December 14th this year. And then here we are today, prior to March 15th, we bring into the second interim report. And as I mentioned, if you are a positive certified district, you do not need to do a third interim report, which we haven't done and will hopefully never do. As far as our revenue changes, they mostly consist of recognizing grant awards that were not included in the first interim report since we had not received the funds and/or the source documents that say we're being awarded those funds. And you see that reflected in that change. There is also a slight upward in our property tax projection, and you can see that on there. Bringing the total revenue adjustment from first interim to second interim upward revision of $705,000. Expenditures also increased. This is mostly due to the assignment of the $1.3 million for the costs related to the artist's theater upgrades, electrical and lighting upgrades. And that was done with the funds available through the arts, music discretionary block grant. As we recall, the board had to approve that plan for use of those funds. They're one time in nature, and that's why we recommended that they be used for the theater. And then there was also some fairly significant costs that we've experienced in there as needed costs, mostly to do with our special education program and placements. A lot of those we didn't have at first interim that we're able to capture at second interim as far as placements and expenditure increases, as well as some of our software applications that we did not have at first interim. There is a slight upward revision in those expenditures as well. And so that is what makes up that 2.25 million increase in expenditures with, again, the bulk being use of those one-time funds to support the artist theater upgrades, and that's the electrical and lighting systems. I should go back. I'm sorry. Let me go back. Other changes were really just recognizing the staffing movement and hiring occurred between first interim and second interim. And so they, we weren't staffed at the same levels that we thought we'd be at first interim. And so where you have a reduction in salary, there's a subsequent reduction in benefits because you're not paying, you pay benefits as a percentage of the salaries. This slide provides for the board how our ending fund balance has changed since the budget adoption. So you see on the, on the far left of the screen, that's what the adopted budget had as far as all of our ending fund balance. And I broke out the components there for you to see. You can see the changes that we looked at in December 14th. Increased quite a bit from adopted budget. And then again, slightly reduced at the second interim, but again, maintaining a very healthy fund balance. And I'm going to talk about what, what I mean when I say a healthy fund balance. I'm going to explain that a bit more on the next slide for you. So when we look at our multi-year projections, you can see our revenues over expenditures each year showing a surplus, a slight surplus every year, which is a good thing. But more importantly, I want to point out that fund balance. Within the general fund, there are four key areas that we must maintain in the fund balance in, in order to say we have a positive certification. There's the revolving cash, and I'll go back a slide so you can see it. So you have the non-spendable, that's revolving cash, and that's $50,000. You have for us, we have a retirement incentive from a couple of years ago for the PARZ annuity. That's in the committed fund. Every year that goes down a little bit based on the payoff that we do, it's a payoff over a five-year period. And right now that is sitting at about the $980,000. So it'll be a little less next year, but it needs to remain committed in the fund balance because it's a commitment we made to pay off for that retirement incentive. Routine restricted maintenance account, we maintain a reserve in that section, and that's in the restricted section. And that is a percentage calculation of 4% of total expenditures budgeted for the year. So we also have a routine restricted maintenance account that we pay for all of the maintenance of the projects. But this is a commitment the board made in policy to set aside within the fund balance 4% for any unforeseen issues that may come up in the future. So, but I, I thank you for that. Because being in the fiscal office, that's nice to have those tools at our disposal. And then of course, the unassigned, which is the reserve for economic uncertainties. State law requires us as a unified district to maintain at least 3% of our total budget within that fund balance for unassigned or economic uncertainties. The board also has a policy that says we're going to maintain 2% on top of that. So a total of 5% of total fund balance of expenditures is our reserve for economic uncertainties. And so that's what's in there. When you add all that up, the required amount that we need to maintain in our fund balance is roughly $8.4 million. You'll note that the ending balance in this year and the next three years is more than doubled than that, with the exception of 2025, 26. And the reason for that drop is because within the fund balance in our sign, we have committed the $10 million to support the capital improvement program. We are keeping it within our fund balance until such time we need to put it into the capital improvement program to support the facilities projects. And right now, based on the facilities master plan, we anticipate that to occur in 2025, 26. Hence, you see that the annual transfer go from 2.1 million for our capital improvement program to the $12.1 million. And so that's why the drop in fund balance, it's just a matter of that cash flow dance that we do within our multi-year. And that's why it's there, but it's still well above what we consider our required fund balance reserve or total fund balance at the end of the year, being that 8.4 million in any given year. So with that said, there are minor changes and I hope I explained some of the nuances of this. A lot of it is detailed in the components of the ending fund balance. And I'd be happy to take any questions, but at this point, staff does recommend the board certify our second interim report as a positive certification. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member, do you have questions on the report? I mean, hearing your comment, Jeff, the theater work was done, correct?
The theater work is in design currently and with the estimated construction in the summer.
Thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Dixon, those contracts on that discretionary arts block grant, we saw those in the winter, correct? Was it fall? When, when, when was that?
We haven't entered into any construction contracts.
Construction contracts, but the dedication of the funds to that block grant was.
Correct.
So we've moved quite fast if we're already in design.
Yes.
On those projects, which is fantastic.
And I will point out that a lot of the work, as you recall, we have a lot of unit cost bids. So a lot of the work that we perform with maintenance and facilities can be done using our unit cost bidders. And that includes painting HVAC or mechanical work, electrical, even carpentry. So that's, a lot of that will be that way in terms of awarding contracts for architects or engineers. Those typically come with projects that require state architect approval because you need a, a stamped set of plans before you can do that work to certify it's up to the code of the state architect.
It also helps move the projects along faster to deliver theater modernizations to our students.
Correct.
Without everything coming through this board. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ask for motion, please. Any discussion? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Thank you. Our next 8B is approval to renew contract with First Student, Inc. for individualized transportation services on a unit cost basis for the 2024, 25 fiscal year in an amount not to exceed $705,000. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. So this is.
None was received by bringing that card?
Okay, thank you. So this is our renewal for our contract with First Student, who provides individualized transportation services for our, our students with special needs. This includes students both with being transported to schools within the district and outside the district, depending on their placement needs. And this reflects a 3.5% escalation from last year's contract. That's built in and, and not to exceed amount of $705,000 as estimated for next year.
Any questions on this item?
Mr. Dixon, approximately how many students are transported? I know the per student cost can be kind of costly.
I don't have off the top of my head the, the number of students, but I will say that the unit costs per transport and per service went up very negligibly. So the 3.5% on a very nominal trip cost, it was, but the number of students and locations in terms of mileage or distance traveled has increased. That's why you see the increase from last year to this year primarily. It's not to do with the rate increase per se.
About 50, 55. Oh, I missed your five. I thought that was 50. So I need to go back to hand motion school. 15, 20.
Any other questions? If not, ask for a motion, please. Any discussion? Student vote? Thank you. Board members on favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. HC, approval to renew contract with Durham School Services, LP for school transportation services on a unit cost basis for the 2024, 25 fiscal year in an amount not to exceed $2,173,500. A public comment on this item?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Similar to the last bid renewal, this is for our general home-to-school transportation provider, Durham School Services. Again, this reflects a 3.5% increase on the renewal. And it is a unit cost bid, so it provides services. So it provides services as needed for our district, and it's just the continuation of the contract we've had in place with them for many years. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Then ask for motion, please. Any discussion?
A comment. I was speaking with a board member from Irvine today, and they don't have community funding, but they still have to provide a lot of money for their transportation also. It's expensive everywhere.
It's very expensive. Any other discussion? Going to ask? Student vote? Thank you. Board members on favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. AD approval of the transportation plan for a period of three years, beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2027. Do we have public comment on this item?
None received.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. So as you know, last year was the first year we had to bring a transportation plan to the board for approval, and that was to contingent to get our state mastering our reimbursement funding from the state of California for transportation services. And to member Perry's point, the reimbursement is far less than our actual costs. Just for the board's knowledge, it is the way the state calculates your reimbursement, it is 60% of your total transportation cost from prior year, less what the local control funding formula add-on for transportation would be. We do not receive any LCFF dollars. However, we are able to calculate what that add-on would be, and it is still deducted from our reimbursement amount, as it would be true for all community funded districts as well. So this is the same plan that was brought before you last year with only two minor changes. The first being that the, we're recommending that the board approve this plan for a three-year term. Last year, that was not an option for us. It had to be renewed based on the way it was, the law was written on an annual basis. But a recent update in January of this year provides that you can do a multi, multiple-year agreement on the, or multiple-year approval of a transportation plan. However, should anything change in the plan before the end of the term or the expiration of whatever years you put, so for us, three years, you would have to bring it back to the board for approval to recognize those changes. The only other change within the plan is adjustments to the bus fee schedule because the bus, the cost of a bus pass changes year over year. So we put in next year's bus pass fee rate with little asterisks that says the following two years, the fee may be changed. Usually it's very nominal. And with that, I would, I'm happy to take any questions on this.
Questions?
I'm not sure if this fits here, but President Bickers said this would be a good time to bring up what I wanted to about transportation.
I think that was a comment made a while back at a meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Dixon? I don't, I don't.
Yeah, it's about transportation. Yeah, not for me. Yeah. Yes. I had brought it up before, and then the staff had looked into what it would cost to transport some of our college and career students to Capo Valley. And the cost was pretty high. It was over $80,000. But thinking of that, I mean, we would pay that much or with benefits and or more for a teacher and all that is provided with, we have so many of our students going to Capo Valley after. And I've spoken to two students, I don't know how many there might be, that would like to go if there was transportation. Being freshmen and sophomores can't drive, some juniors maybe can, but not everybody has a car. And it happened, the students I talked to were English second language students. And so it would make it more equitable for them to get there. And you know, at Capo Valley, they have all those great career classes like, you know, the car repair classes, the med techs, the, I'm looking for my notes here. The dental hygiene classes, the working on the pharmacy classes, several levels of that. And I think it would, it's expensive, but I think it would be a great use of our money because if kids have a goal, if they want to try out a career, that can make a big difference in their life forever. I mean, they may find what they love to do and really be able to make a living at it. And I would really be in favor of giving them that opportunity. We do have, we looked at bringing fashion design here, but it's going to Dana Hills, which isn't too far because we had some students interested in that. And I'm really happy we're bringing Vet Tech here. I had had students that were interested in that. But for many, many of these other classes, if we just had a bus go four days a week, or vans go four days a week to Capo Valley, I think that would be great. And I wanted to know what my fellow board members thought.
Member Perry, do you know on the?
We need a motion to have a discussion, to approve, a motion to approve the plan to have this. A second. Yes.
For the CTE classes, because you're on the that board, so you're more familiar with the class schedule. Is it like all the classes start at 3:30 and they end at 5:30?
Most of, most of them are four to six or four to 6:30.
So they do run on a consistent?
Yeah.
Schedule?
Yeah. And it may not be next year, but this year, all except one were Mondays and Wednesdays. Next year, that isn't the case.
Oh, so they're.
Next year, there's Tuesday, Thursday, and there's Monday, Wednesday.
Okay, so that complicates it and drives up the cost.
But, but when we looked at the, when staff looked at the transportation amount, I think they were looking for four days.
So the, the cost numbers, Mr. Dixon, that member Perry mentioned were approximately what would, it looks like you guys have had some preliminary date on what this would cost to explore. What was the order of magnitude?
Yeah, about $100,000. And that is based on the current Durham unit cost bid. Because our provisions for different buses and different size buses and different transport types, depending on the activity within our unit cost bid. And that's based on what's in there. And I did confirm that with Durham as well. So it would be anywhere between 85 to $100,000.
Okay. It seems a little expensive to me. I think, I think it's an interesting path to explore it because I'd love to see more kids be able to get to those classes or with that investment, get more of those classes to us. Because I think even more than what the transportation to Capo Valley would do if the class, if another class was here, it would open up even farther just because of the transportation time. So that's my initial thought. But I also think it might be interesting to look beyond Durham and explore maybe out of the box transportation. Like it might be interesting to see what our liability levels and what other on-demand transportation might look like. If it's Uber for teens and a voucher, or if it's, if there's any other districts out there statewide that are doing this without a big yellow school bus going all the way over there every day of the afternoon.
I, I can actually, so for this, this item specifically, there's nothing in the, our transportation plan that precludes any additional transportation service. I think that's what's nice about our plan. And for, I mean, just for context, in our small city, we do 140 bus pickups in the morning and 154 drop-offs in the afternoon. So we are serving the entire community at multiple locations all over the city. When you look at the alternative potential transportation providers, we have received bids when we've conducted, we have to do a formal bid. Any, any amount over $10,000, you have to formally bid transportation service. To date, we have not been able to award any of the alternative transportation providers because they do not meet our insurance or indemnification requirements. And it is strongly discouraged by our liability insurance carrier. So I'm not saying it's impossible, but it seems like a mighty hill to climb at this point for that, offering something like that.
To, to answer your other question, Clerk Osborne, they have a college and career training center at Capo Valley, which, you know, includes a lot of, of medical equipment and pharmacy equipment and surgical equipment and, you know, the whole auto mechanic program. So it's all set up there. Would, would be great to bring it all here, but I don't know if we have room and all the equipment. I just, so of our 31 students that are now doing after-school, seven go here and stay, I mean, stay here on campus. The rest go off, mostly to Capo Valley. And I think that number would really increase by maybe 20 more students if we could offer transportation.
Is there anything in our transportation plan about carpooling? Like, you know, I know there's liability even for districts and setting up, you know, carpooling or ride sharing or supporting that. You know, we thought, oh, over the years, it's easy like to get cars off the road. Can't we just maybe set up a car sharing Google form? But is that in our transportation?
It is not because this is tied to the state reimbursement. It's specific to the transportation costs you for home-to-school transportation and special transportation.
Isn't it also a liability issue on that also?
Yeah, but one of the things that we've, we didn't get a chance to do it this year because they're doing enrollment right now. But one of the topics of discussion that we had as an executive team was the potential that, you know, allowing, if students who were signing up for the courses needed some sort of support to get there and allowing them to share that information so that maybe there could be a collective of folks where we're not facilitating necessarily. We're just allowing people to share information and that, that takes your liability away. If you're just simply saying, this is what we are aware of, the parent signs off the form that please, yeah, share. And they can help potentially make arrangements that way. That's a way around the, the idea of us hosting a carpool website because that's when the district does take on that liability.
So do we have any information about students that want to take programs but don't because of transportation?
Not at this time.
The other thing, I'll make one last comment on this, but I'm just thinking through the lens of a high schooler in Chase and Carter, like jump in here if you want. But I'm just trying to channel my 16-year-old, soon-to-be 16-year-old driver's energy. And it's also a time commitment, right? So it could be the transportation, but it could also be the time that's keeping people from not enrolling. So that would be interesting to think about, right? Even if you provided transportation, would it drive enrollment? Because you're still Capo Valley High School, is that what you're saying? These are, there's still a solid 40-minute drive, to be honest, right? We all have been to Capo Valley.
And you've got, you've got student athletes and students and other things like, like the dance, the drama that have after-school.
Yeah, but also.
Conflict with those times.
It'd be interesting to look at the enrollment because more of the classes open up after 16. I've seen a lot of restrictions on these courses that are for really upperclassmen. And so, you know, in some ways, the driving and the age restrictions kind of go hand in hand where it's one of the, seems like program designs or philosophy of those programs is that you have students that are old enough to transport themselves.
That's one of the reasons that in the recent past, they didn't allow the younger students to take their classes because, because transportation was an issue.
Yeah.
They weren't student drivers yet. I mean, even if.
Right now, for, right now, for some of the classes, you have to be 16 by the spring. But then there are a lot of other classes like auto mechanics, you don't, all the.
I will jump in and say really quickly that personally, I do a lot of extracurriculars. I was very indecisive throughout my high school career, and so time conflict was definitely a thing. And I've also, one thing that I've noticed is that underclassmen, as we move forward, many of them are starting to realize what they want to do in the future earlier. I'm realizing what I want to do senior year, along with many of my friends. There are some kids that I know who know freshman year, sophomore year, they know, they are set. And those career pathway classes, those are very helpful. And transportation being an issue, I feel like it'd be really beneficial for those kids to really excel in their pathways if we're able to transport them there.
Little bit in contrast to Chase, I'm, Kevin, one of the speakers here a couple of weeks ago, talked about the business class and how he was having trouble getting to that. And after further consulting with Kevin and Dr. Allman, I sat down with both of them one, one day. And we kind of discussed what's the need on campus? Who, what's, what group of students actually really, you know, who's going to at least New York High School, who feel like they're not having the, who's not having the opportunity to take the class? And it was a rather low number of students who ended up signing a form that Kevin was passing around and said that they wanted, they wanted to participate. And so it's, at least it's the students that I've talked to, it's my view that they have adequate, I feel like they have adequate resources at the high school. And obviously, Ms. Gregory, Ms. Tacklin, the college commissioner, leading in a direction, like obvious, I understand what Chase is saying. Like, yes, it's really beneficial for students to have the opportunity to take these different classes. But from my point of view, I just don't think that there's enough of a need to support it for the district to support funding for it. I think that the majority of our students are, you know, with their athletics, and that takes up the majority of their time. I know at least most of the students, the most of the students that I'm friends with, you know, they all have practice after-school every single day. And so they can't drive to Capo Valley. Obviously, that's not every student. But I think for the majority of students, it just, you know, $80,000 a year or whatever it is, I'm just not sure that that really reaches a, you know, a wide majority.
Perhaps we could, we just have some more information on some of the paths that you guys have explored, whether it's, you know, the city on-demand service, you know, on a reimbursement rate, the Uber teen, the, the unit cost per, per student, right? Because, you know, Chase or Carter brought up a good comment just on the cost. If there was an opportunity to get another CTA class with that amount of funds here, right? I know we looked, we added lifeguarding, right? You could do that here. But I saw some kids pulling fire hoses in last night at the fire station. I don't know if that's here. But, you know, maybe if staff could just give us some update in the weekly on some of the different things that we've explored so that we can continue to think about it, because I appreciate your comment.
That would be great to continue to think about it. And I think, like both of you said, a lot of these students are not the ones that are in athletics. They're students that need to work and are really looking towards that and don't have a way to do it. And I would love to help them.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye. Oppose? Carrie's 5-0. Our next business service item is D8E, approval of, to award a contract to TPB Architecture, Inc. for architectural services to modernize transitional kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms at Al Moro and Top of the World Elementary Schools in an amount not to exceed $534,310. Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, I have a speaker card, 8E, Sherry Morgan. Please come forward. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on 8E? Okay.
Sorry. So I wanted to comment on that, but the last, the last item kind of went a different direction with the CIT, not just transportation. And I think both gentlemen have a really good point that without transportation, some kids might not even entertain the opportunity. And other kids may not have the time because they're doing after-school athletics and things like that. So even going so far as to a Saturday opportunity might be something to look at as well, but transportation is always an issue. So to just dismiss it as though it's not something to fund in a district such as ours is probably not too quick to dismiss. I would not dismiss it so quickly. Anyway. Thank you for allowing me to address that. On item 8E, I just am curious as to, going back to comments that I made earlier when I appreciated that. Chusky, remember Mal Chusky? Did I say that right? Yes, I've been practicing. And I think member Perry offered and asked about prioritizing some of these capital improvement projects, some of these facilities on the facilities plan. I'm just really curious because I know there was a lot of discussion about the administration building and the district offices and the importance of having such buildings updated because at some point we can do a lot for our students, but we still need to provide good working environments for our staff. And I do want to preface anything regarding our staff to say that I have the utmost respect for our site leadership and our administrative staff. I think you guys are phenomenal. So it's never personal. It's always about our community, and I'm always about our community first and our kids as well. But I'm curious as to where the administration building and district office building is falling into this allocation of funds and this allocation of timing with these plans. Because if you are trying to push through this pool plan in the next several years, where does the administration and district office fall into this? How is it being funded? When is it being funded? Because now you're talking about potentially three, five, six years of complete and total disruption in that neighborhood. And if you're not looking at addressing the district office and administration in this business plan. So, thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Mr. Dixon? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. And if I bring up Mr. Zeta in case there are any questions on the request for proposal process. He ran it with our team and staff tonight is recommending award for the TK Kinder Classroom renovations about top of the world and El Moro Elementary School Architectural Design Services to TBP Architecture. And it's really based on their response to our RFP. Some of the highlights that we've heard, or at least I heard from the committees is they really seemed to understand our district in their proposal response. It was really tailored to our needs. They seem to understand what we are looking for. In addition to highlighting several recent very similar projects. And one of the bigger highlights that I heard, and it was Mr. Cool at top of the world, said that he really enjoyed how they tapped into the outdoor and indoor learning spaces and made him feel cohesive. And that's what put them over the top for him. So if awarded, obviously, we will begin to put our design team together. And when designing a TK or Kinder Classroom, you're obviously going to have the end users as your primary focus for your your design team to help guide the architect and what the end user is going to experience. And then if there are any questions with regards to the RFP or the process used, if I can't answer them, Mr. Zeta is up here just in case, and we're happy to take any questions, but we do recommend award at this time.
More members have questions to ask either Mr. Dixon or Mrs. Zeta?
Mr. Dixon, on this proposal, the staff report mentions El Moro has classroom seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, three kindergarten classrooms. Four, pardon me, and then twenty four, twenty five, twenty six to create the two. I just want to confirm is the preschool classroom part of here because it mentions kindergarten and transitional kindergarten. I know we've made a big investment in preschool. Is this part of this correct?
Actually, preschool is going to be hosted in the fifties classrooms, fifty one, fifty two, fifty three. And then the facility master plan does show that building being replaced with a new single story building that would be a permanent home for those, the preschool component at El Moro. So to answer your question, no, this just addresses the kindergarten classrooms and the transitional creation of the two transitional kindergarten classes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions on this plan? Ask for a motion, please. Any discussion? You know, we've had a lot of discussion as we got ready to approve the tenure facility master plan that was worked on for a long time. And this is one of the first projects and to meet state mandated needs, it became to the move to the top of the priority list. Mr. Zeta, do you have anything you want to add to for us or? Okay, thank you. Anybody to vote? Yes, student vote. I'm going to ask for student vote. Thank you. No, I was like, more members all in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh, thank you. Keep me on task, Mr. Dr. Kelly. Eight F, approval to award contracts for designing services to modernize Laguna Beach High School Community Pool in an amount not to exceed one million seven hundred thousand dollars. Public comment on this item?
Yes, I'm going to just call these cards in the order they were received. This is eight F, I have Steve McIntosh. And then I have Howard Hills. And I have Tony Eiseman. And then I have Sherry Morgan. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on this item? Go ahead, Steve.
Hello again. I'm sure that most of you are aware that the city council voted five to zero to build their own modern community pool that will serve all of the residents of Laguna for many years and generations to come. The good news is for you, the district, that this is a great opportunity that allows you to revisit your choice of a fifty meter pool, and that is fantastic news. Let's look at those criteria and justifications that you guys had for that. We need a large pool, big enough to host water polo games in. Well, you can build a state of the art, all deep thirty five or thirty eight competition pool with diving right in the existing spot. Remodel the bathhouse and enlarge it, all while saving taxpayers eight million dollars plus and build costs, in build costs and increase and save off the two hundred and fifty thousand that's going to cost you to run the fifty. All the while reducing your environmental footprint, allowing you to actually practice what you preach about that at the district. The next was the need to hold three concurrent waterfall polo practices. That's great news now, since the city programs aren't there, the water polo coach can implement his plan of staggering his teams and not having to have them in the pool at the same time. Teams can use the pool until later in the evening, and this pool would exceed all CIF requirements by far. And the age group kids will be out of the pool because they're not even in that pool. They'll be way out, so that's not even a problem. And one of my favorites, all the other teams we play have a fifty meter pool. Well, we finally did a bit of checking of who we actually play, and this is what I found out. We're in the sunset league with seven teams. Out of that seven, only two are fifty meter pools. Edison has a brand new forty meter pool. Fountain Valley is building a new thirty five that's going to be done this month and Marina thirty five. And they're giant schools with twenty four hundred to three thousand students. So so thank everyone's building the fifty meter pool. Let's take a look at the statement of qualification and the proposal from your chosen architect, Renau and Clark, who, by the way, are good guys. On page nine, then you can see some of the pools that they have worked on, and I would assume fairly recently. We have Anaheim High School, thirty eight meters. Suboba Aquatic Center, San Jacinto Unified, thirty eight meter. San Gregorio, thirty eight meter. Cypress High School, a lowly twenty five meters. And here we go, Cathedral City High School, thirty eight meters. So I think you can see that not everybody's building a fifty meter. And we were not experiencing that all over the place here. So the moral of the story is that you pretty much lost your justification, should change your tack, revisit your vote on the pool and an opportunity to save millions and provide your seventy nine kids in aquatic a fantastic system. The important thing now is the district to slow their build, vote to delay the design approval, wait for a pool to be built here in town in the district. Should join the city, can join the city in while building your new thirty five meter pool. This way it's a win for all. And we keep everybody swimming, the entire city is watching, the ball is in your court.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh, Howard Hills. And Mr. Hills will be followed by Mrs. Eiseman. Oh, no, come forward. I was just letting the next speaker know.
Yeah, I just got back to town and and I have heard a lot of people expressing really strong views about this issue. When I first heard about the original proposal, which I referred to as the Taj Mahal Legacy Proposal, I said, all the rest of these things that are being proposed are just covered to be eliminated so that they could build the pool. I mean, I said that, I don't know whether it was a year ago or longer. I think, you know, at the Kennedy School Government, they have a saying that when you find yourself in a hole, you don't know how you got there, how to get out. Put down the shovel. And I think you really need to put down the shovel and stop digging. I think that I would like to think that this isn't going to continue and go on any further. You know, I was, I was in one of the last, I was in either the last class or the second of the last class that attended Thurston, Thurston Middle School when it was down where the pool is right now. And I remember when they built this this campus, and I think it was good foresight, but I don't think this is a good foresight. I think, I think that having the city pull out, I agree with Steve, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity to say, well, you know, this was sort of a successful thing of having the city and the school district have the the pool down there and it worked for a while. But is it really a good model? Is it the best model? You know, the the city municipal governance process has a lot of problems going on with it right now. The school district governance process, I believe, has a lot of problems going on with it. I think in both the city, case of the city, and in the case of the school district, a lot of the problems that are happening with governance right now began when you stopped rotating all members through the leadership and the presiding officer positions in the in the school district. They've done that down at the city hall now. And they're having some of the same problems that you're having here since you stopped rotating and having full diversity representation in the position of the presiding officers. So I think, you know, I think that this is an opportunity to step back and say, do we really want to go bigger at our high school? I will, last thing I'll say, because I'm running out of time, I finally learned to look at that. You know, when my grandma was here and I started the school, having the high school built in a neighborhood was an act of love by the people in the community, including my grandma, for the students. And I think that it is a neighborhood campus that serves the full community, but it is still a neighborhood campus. And I think you need to go back to a neighborhood campus and get the city out of the school district's athletic program.
Thank you, Mr. Hills. Coming to the podium now, Mrs. Eiseman. And she'll be followed by Mrs. Morgan. Thank you.
I'm glad I had a chance to sit here and find out all the wonderful things that are happening and in particular, the principal of this school. I was at a middle school for ten years, ten years of high school, fifteen at a community college. I was a counselor and I I really know you're doing a lot of things right. However, on the wall, solve problems, make good decisions, achieve in respect. What's on the agenda tonight? Are you solving a problem or causing a problem? Is this a good, good decision? What are you achieving and who do you respect? I don't think this is fair to your student body. And if I were a government teacher here, I'd spend several weeks talking about this because letters to the editor are going to be burning, talking about this decision. There are so many people that are being hurt by this fifty meter pool that you're suggesting. This is a real opportunity to put the brakes on, reconsider what's going on and don't step in it because it's not going to go away. Students learn by watching. And they are going to be watching this decision and wondering, who do you work for? How many students, you know, the only people that were parents asking for this were usually, of course, swimming parents, but water polo parents. And I know you've heard this, our students did pretty well in that old pool with water polo. So we want you to model behavior for the student body. Let them know that you're, you're fair. Let them know that you're looking out for the entire student body. And don't put yourself in harm's way because the letters are going to come flying and it'll rattle and you have a chance tonight to put the brakes on.
Thank you, Mrs. Eiseman, Mrs. Morgan. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this after Mrs. Morgan? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Carter, first of all, and all due respect, I appreciate all of the time that you've dedicated in the water to water polo. And I know that this has got to be an interesting time for you to be on this board with this program being so discussed and used as the vehicle to justify a pool that if the city does not join the funding, then the high school pool is not a community pool, it's a high school pool. And right now, the high school track, if I understand correctly, is closed to the public during the day, correct? I think, Mrs. Vickers, Madam Vickers, you're on, you use the track and I think the fire department uses the track during the day. Otherwise, it's closed to the public, isn't that right? Because during school hours. So if we don't have, if the pool is not funded by the community and you have been very clear with Madam Vickers and Osborne being on the committee that you are absolutely not negotiable. You are building the fifty meter pool at whether they funded or not. I think those were your words, Dr. Valoria, is that right? I can play the recording, but I left my phone in my seat. I don't want to use my time. That, and that's what the city said that you had mentioned. So it's not even my words, it's actually the words of our city council saying that you have stated that you are not going to work with them. And yet this is a joint use agreement. So I'm wondering what happens to the joint use agreement that you have now said, you know, well, we're not going to work with you. So how does that funding work? How does the city recoup some of their costs based on the fact that you are no longer going to allow the city and the community to use a pool that we have funded seventy percent of for a long time? What happens to the community when they want to use a pool and they don't have access to it because the city's not going to fund it? And it's not going to be open during the day to the general public because it's now school property. And like the track, the community is not allowed to use it. So I would have to agree with my, the fellow speakers, you've done yourself a hole. And this is a hole that you had so many opportunities to get yourself out of, but egos preceded logic. And you decided that you were going to go forward no matter what. And there's only a few that I can look at here because I know there's only a couple of you on this committee that worked with the city that they referenced multiple times, said, no, we're not working with them. And they can give us their money if they want, but even if they give us a couple million dollars, they don't even give a say in what kind of design we have. So while I said several months before, and in fact, I said a year, it was, oh, now it's a year before. The district's going to push this pool through whether the community wants it or not. And sadly, they have hung it on water polo. And it's not, water polo's got nothing to do with it. I had swimmers, water polo, baseball. We all went out of town for our sports. It's just kind of part of what you do if you live in Laguna. You get the beach and then you go out of town for your sports, but you can't have it all.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Any other public speakers on this item?
Any more speakers? That's all public speakers?
That's all the cards I have.
I think it's, from my, from my point of view, it's imperative before I turn it over to Mr. Dixon to make some significant corrections. A member, Osborne and myself, met with the members from the city on the joint subcommittee for many meetings. It was an open back and forth discussion. There was negotiation, if you choose to call it that. But I think the underlying thing that is misunderstood to me is that the the decision for the board to include a fifty meter pool in the tenure facilities master plan is to accommodate the city needs. The city recreation needs, the community recreation needs. So some of you raised a comment today that this gives us a way out. That was not our intent. We had a thirty year joint use on the community pool that we have now. The city opted out at their meeting. Actually, we should change the title of this agenda item because it, because of their decision. And we really, we really encouraged collaboration to continue with them. We've had a good thirty year working relationship with joint use of the pool. And they made a concrete decision and confirmed it today that they have opted out. So it's not, it was not our, our choice. And that was, if you listen to the staff report at the city council meeting and identified the four to five shallow lanes that would have made their needs, that was, we could not do it in a smaller pool, it needed a bigger pool. So, excuse me. Excuse me.
I'd like to make one, one more.
Want to make any comment on our?
I just want to make, yes, one more comment, then I really want to hear the staff report on this item. And this is a letter dated December first, twenty twenty three. This is after three meetings between city up to the formation, a request for a formation of a joint ad hoc committee, which we did at our joint city council, school board meeting in June. And then the subsequent two meetings that we held with the ad hoc committee, which were on December fourth and on February second. But on December fourth, in writing, we write to the city and say, this letter is the Board of Education's response to city's council's request for insights into the priorities of the school board regarding the high school community pool. The board aims to reaffirm its commitment to sustained partnership with the city to collectively address and meet the diverse needs of the broader community. We wrote that letter, we sent it to him, it goes on for many other paragraphs. But we work together on this, we negotiated in good faith. If you talk with the mayor, she will tell you, we negotiated in good faith. We tried to understand the needs, the cost, the timelines, the scope of the project. We actually looked, looked at a lot of input from the then mayor and the future mayor about the whole scope of the facilities master plan and incorporated a lot of their input. So the the process was very robust and I think we ended up going our own ways and we fully support them. And I think the community will benefit. It might not seem like it tonight. But we were very open to negotiations. And if that's been misconstrued because it's hot off the presses, that's one thing. But I think the truth will prevail and I think they know we're very open to negotiating their needs and trying to design a pool that fit all of the communities asks. And, you know, more conversational and stew on the design. But this board was committed to a fifty meter pool. So good governance, we would not go back on that. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, I want to make a present.
Thank you, President Vickers. So this item is a bit more complex in terms of the contracts being awarded for the project and simply due to the scope of the pool modernization. So as you can see, several contracts are recommended for award as part of the RFP process. All the services and contracts are. All the services and contracts are necessary to developing an approved set of drawings to Division of the State Architect, which is why they're all in the same item. These are all services that we would need to do to get the approved set of plans. When you look at the item, staff is recommending Runal Clark to serve as the Architect of Record. CW Driver is recommended for construction management pre-construction services. Ultra Systems Environmental is recommended for the CEQA consultant. And MTGL Inc. is recommended for the geotechnical engineering. Again, Mr. Zeta and I are here for any questions related to the process. Very pleased and thank you, Carter, for your support and reviewing the proposals with us. I know it can be a little time consuming. And thank you, Mr. Zeta. You did a great job putting this together and getting a lot of input from all of our swim coaches and athletics folks at the high school. So that'll leave it to you to ask questions.
No questions, board members? Okay, do we have a motion then?
Second.
Any discussion?
I had some discussion on some of the firms that were selected. So thank you for running such a robust process. I was pleased with the number of bids that came in and the quality and the level of expertise that the firms were demonstrating. Runal Clark, I think, definitely really understood the project well. When you read through their proposal, one of the first questions was, what's the intended use? Because we need to know who's this pool intended for before we can design it. And I also really loved they pulled out a lot of the things that I think that will benefit from this project in the sustainability category, passive heating, better filtration, less chemicals. You know, really bringing, you know, when we say it's a pool modernization, we, you know, they really laid out in their proposal how they're going to modernize it and make it more green for our city. And I really appreciated that. CW Driver, I thought, was a fantastic longstanding 100-year-old company. They have so much experience in pools and K through 14 education. I mean, best in class, Orange Coast College, all the 50-meter pools for all of the 38- and 40-meter pools that have been built on K through 12 campuses. There's just as many or more that have built a 50-meter. And they demonstrate that. You can look through their information. And I really feel like we're in good hands with them. Ultra Systems on the CEQA work. I really liked the proposal that they highlighted on their work with Corona Norco on the Centennial 50-meter pool. They also had neighbors that were within 20 feet of their property boundaries. We've heard that that's very unique. And I think there are other districts and other firms that have experience working with the same geographic constraints that we have. So I was really impressed and feel confident that they can deliver the results that we want. So again, I think the robustness of the process, and you guys have already demonstrated that you're able to stay on timelines with collecting the RFPs and bringing them back to the board for approval. So I support those. I just wanted to share those comments with my fellow board members.
The discussion? Do we have a motion? Yes, we do. I do.
Right, thank you. I have to let you know that I am, I think that Runal and Clark are great. It's not them. But I need to vote, I'm going to vote no on their contract because I don't believe we need a 50-meter pool, especially, well, I didn't before. But now with the city not even going in on it with us, the costs, and I'm concerned about the yearly maintenance costs of up to $240,000 to $250,000. You know, me, I'd rather, I'd rather spend 80 to 100 getting kids to their careers. So I cannot vote for this.
Anybody else have any discussion?
My fellow teammates, and they really liked the Clark architect. And so I just want to say thank you for including on the process because we went over some things that we're going to, you know, talk about in the future. So it was great. Thank you.
Oh, so sorry.
I just have to raise some questions because from what I stated earlier, I mean, it was, the 50-meter was to include the city and they have opted out. And for me, in good faith, I think that I have some questions I need answered, which basically has a lot to do with not necessarily the size, but the cost and the long-range cost. If we're looking at a 30-year life of a pool. So, and I know that we got the cost of construction on a 50 or a 40. And we were told at that time that we could meet our needs in either one of those sizes. And we made the step up to the 50 as to be redundant to accommodate the city and all the youth programs and the adult needs for recreation. And so what I don't have firmly in my head to go forward, and I am in favor of approving this, but the details are, to me, related still to the size and that ongoing cost, the operational cost. Because since the city decided to go their separate way, basically taxpayers in Laguna, whether it's through us or through the city, are going to be paying for two yearly operational maintenance costs ongoing forward. And so I would like to know what our savings would be, is basically what my question is. And I'm not asking for that answer tonight, but I think that, I think we need to consider that. And I, maybe an unpopular, it's definitely in the opposition to what Member Osborne's saying. But, you know, that was why I made the decision before and I, and I am rethinking that.
The question it raises for me is whether or not moving ahead with the contracts so we can think about design is really separate from the question you're raising.
Well, the design is what we, we're going to tell them that we want in the design.
Right. So, but is, is, does the contract include having a discussion about 40 versus 50 meters? Or are you suggesting that we don't move forward with even?
Oh, I want to move forward because I want to stick with the timeline. I'm asking.
Right, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Do we have any opportunity for that?
Yeah, and could we just have, now that we have the definitive answer from the city, I think it's, it's perfect timing to have an update on not only the capital, but the ongoing cost. We knew the capital cost at the time between the two sizes of pools was between 1 and 2 million. So that was a very key piece of data for me, but that's on the capital cost. So now on the ongoing, we could have an update, you know, whenever that was feasible with staff schedule. I think that would be warranted and helpful.
If I could just kind of chime in, so like, like it's been mentioned, this is just for the design services related to the pool modernization. Up to this point, through the entire facility master plan process, we are under the assumption, we are under, with a joint use with the city of Laguna Beach. That brought in a lot of different requirements to our pool, did not just serve our needs, but also various community needs. As we work to get into design, we would work now that we know as of Tuesday that the city no longer wants to partner with us in this pool project, the designs would be specific to meeting our needs. Would that require a 50-meter pool? I can't say yes or no, more than likely not. But we would work with our design committee to design the pool based on the needs to support all of our students and everything that we've talked through up to this point. And that's what's nice about getting into design versus facility master planning because we're getting out of conceptual and getting into the nuts and bolts and seeing what the actual impacts, what the project and what the finished product could look like.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure you got, because that is our intent as we get into design. We'll loop back to the board, bringing back design features based on the feedback we get. And I, you know, we'll, we'll work through that and make sure the board is apprised as we go along the process.
So just to restate, what I would be approving going ahead with the design of it, whether or not it, the size of the pool is going to be encompassed in that whole design discussion and that will come back to us. So there's no reason to stop this at this point.
Correct, 100%.
And my interest is really not to say, like, it's not like a backlash to the city deciding to opt out because, I mean, I think that's really unfortunate because we really were hopeful to continue. It's just the fact that I want to make sure that we do what meets our needs and not more.
Well, and in some ways, President Vickers, you know, most, you know, for example, Newport Mesa, the pool that they have under construction is a 50-meter deep-water competition pool, right? So there was no, there are no shallow lanes going in that type of pool because that's being designed as a competition pool. So we actually have a set of new possibilities, right? So we knew from design conversations that, you know, we couldn't have a waiting area, right? It was not going to fit on the site, you know, based on the constraints we have at 670 Park Avenue. But now we have other design possibilities that could be part of our, of our planning. So, you know, we've had past water polo people ask, why don't the concrete bleachers go the whole, you know, span the whole way or, you know, and it's like, well, we need a lot of locker and shower rooms because we have this open door for the city to partner with us. And they need different locker rooms because we want to have overlapping rec swim because we know and we've heard from hundreds of people that they want that. So we need large locker rooms to, you know, all of these conversations that we've had with the city for the last year and a half have been assuming that we're going to get to an agreement. We're going to need a mix of shallow and deep lanes. We're going to need more locker rooms to separate students from community members. We're going to need overlapping time. So we have a big choice set of how we might want to go. You know, it could be a competition pool only, right? So those are.
Just follow up on what you're thinking as, as the two members of the subcommittee. I think that, as you said, we were going forward all the time, assuming that we would have a partnership. And that's, that's the change. Well, part of the, of the partnership that was part of our subcommittee negotiation discussions would have been, was around cost sharing and continuing with what we'd had or finding different formulas. So I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate that it was misrepresented at the meeting. Yeah, thank you.
And I, you know, there's also a lot of design things that the city's mentioned that, you know, wouldn't ever have fit in a high school pool, you know, like a very, very shallow waiting area or splash zone or other amenities that they might have a vision for. That, you know, I think, I support that and think that's going to bring a lot of value for young families. And I'm about things that are good for families too. So I don't, I think they have a vision of their own that they want to go down. And that's, they have a lot of design features that they might not even have thought of yet. They, you know, so anyhow.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote?
I just want to thank Mrs. Vickers and Mrs. Osborne for the time and effort. And if anyone on the board is kind and listening and helpful, it's you two. I would not, I would not, the way they described you, that would be more me, but it's not the two of you. So again, I just want to thank you as far as for everything you've done.
Thank you. Student vote. Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And thank you for explaining your reason as we have that in our protocols. I appreciate that. Thank you. Action items in human resources. 9A, approve amendment to 2023-24 negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, in its Laguna Beach chapter number 131, in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213/1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title 5, Section 15449. We have public comment on this item?
Don't you not see any?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collin?
Thank you, President Vickers. So yes, the total tax percentage on the P1 property tax assessment from the OC Department of Education, OCDE, received for the 2023-24 fiscal year was 8.7%, which was more than 2% higher than the 5% growth assumed in the adopted budget for 2022-23. So that triggered us to come back and meet with the union members and discuss, meet and confer about the additional money available. So Laguna Beach Unified School District and California Employees Association, and its Laguna Beach chapter 131, have mutually agreed to provide all regular classified employees as defined by Article 2 of the CSEA contract with a one-time off-schedule payment of 1.25%, which is based on each employee's 23-24 base salary. The increased cost for the 2022-23 is $112,725. So staff recommends that the Board of Education ratify the 23-24 revisions to the 2021-2024 collective bargaining agreement negotiated by the designated representatives of CSEA and their chapter and Laguna Beach Unified School District.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Okay, may I have a motion, please? Any discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Thank you. 9B, approval of amendment to the 2023-2026 negotiated agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association, LUBUFA, in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213/1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title 5, Section 15449. Mr. Collin?
Thank you, President Vickers. I'm sorry.
There was a public comment card received. That's okay, but I think she's walking out of the room. Is there any public comment on 9B?
Thanks, Mrs. Thank you.
Not sure what to do.
Okay. So as I had said before, I have the utmost respect for our teachers and our staff. I think they work very hard. And I think when you look at the ed code minutes, especially the elementary and the middle school, you can see that they far exceed state requirements. I am a little concerned at the high school. I've talked to Dr. Ullman about this several times. And I've even talked to Dr. Maltesky about this. I'm sorry, I practice all the time. I'm a little concerned because I think at the high school, we're only about a minute over ed code requirements. And I know that the tutorial has been shifted around and used for a lot of different things. And maybe the students can, can speak to this. But it seems that there's, because tutorial is counted as part of ed code minutes, I'm concerned that there's an abundance of extra opportunities during tutorial that aren't necessarily part of an ed code framework. When I've asked a lot of questions about tutorial, it's been said that it's for teachers to review material for them to help reinforce new idea, to reinforce ideas to come together for different things. And yet, we have pep rallies, which are great because the students need that, you know, something like that to look forward to. But it seems like all the celebrations, all the meetings, all the clubs, everything is happening during tutorial. And it seems as though it's starting to lean a little bit more towards allowing the teachers make sure they get home after school, rather than making sure that our students are using it for tutorial. I know that we get alert, the students get alert saying, you know, choose your tutorial. But I also know that I'm hearing reports of students saying that we have to be at this tutorial on this day or we might not get to participate in an opportunity. And so I know this is all contractual things. And so I don't necessarily think that this is something that site leadership has any influence on. I think they have to navigate this. And so as you are navigating these contracts, I would ask you to seriously look at the high school ed code and the minutes. And even if they're complying by a minute, how is that time really being used? And how, how much is being included in that per contract with the union, not within the control of what the site is trying to do, which is to educate our kids? Because I think it's two different things. I don't think it's the same thing. I don't think what the site's trying to do with the minutes and enforcing is really the same thing that's what's actually negotiated. Otherwise, there wouldn't be so much use of it for the teachers to say, be here or you don't get to do this. So.
Mr. Collin, would you proceed with the amendment to the negotiated contract?
Thank you. So Laguna Beach Unified School District and Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association have mutually agreed to provide all temporary probationary and permanent certificated employees with the one-time off-schedule payment of 1.25%, which is based on each employee's 23-24 base salary. The increased cost for the, for this fiscal year is $350,195. So staff recommends that the Board of Education ratify the 23-24 revisions to the 2021-2024 collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion, please? Any discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Next is 9C, approve amendment of 2023-24 compensation proposal with nonrepresented classified and certificated employees in accordance with AB 1200, chapter 1213/1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title 5, Section 15449. chapter 1213/1991, government code 3547.5, and CCR title 5, section 15449. Public comment on this? Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, President Vickers. So again, with the previous approval of the CSEA and Lufa revised agreements, that includes a 1.25% one-time off-schedule payment. Staff recommends the Board of Education approve the revised 23-24 compensation proposal, providing the same off-schedule payment of 1.25% for nonrepresented classified and certificated employees at the cost of $90,750.
Thank you. Questions, board members? Motion, please? Any discussion? Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. Nine D, approve the certification to the State Board of Education that our temporary athletic team coaches meet all the qualifications and competencies required by California Code of Regulations, title 5, section 5593. Public comment on this? Thank you. Mr. Collin?
Thank you, President Vickers. So as stated in Board Policy 4127, 4227, and 4327, Title 5 of the California Code of Regulation, section 5594, requires that local governing school board certify to the State Board of Education the competency of all employees who are athletic coaches by April 1st of each year. The principal athletic director at the high school have confirmed certification or certification and maintain records of certification required training. The criteria for the certification, as stated in section 5593, includes first aid CPR, sudden cardiac arrest, concussion in sports, heat illness prevention, CIF, educational program requirements, coaching theory and techniques in the sport or game being coached, and knowledge of child or adolescent psychology as it relates to sports participation. So again, the staff asked that the board certify to the State Board of Education that the provisions of Title 5, CCR 5593, have been met.
Thank you. Questions, board members? Ask for a motion, please? Any discussion? We've got that. Any? Lot of thorough qualifications on there. So they're really well prepared, protects our students. Student, student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. We have nine, nine E, approval of amended contract, employment contracts for the Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources, and the Assistant Superintendent Instructional Services. Do we have a public comment on nine E? Thank you. Mr. Collin?
I'm taking that one because it's their contracts. So per the current employee, employment agreements for the Assistant Superintendents, the Assistant Superintendents shall also receive any increases given to the administrative unit, which the board just approved in nine C. And any such upward adjustment shall be in the form of mutually mutually agreed upon written amendment, which is attached for your approval tonight for Mr. Dixon, Mr. Collin, and Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Word questions? If not, then a motion, please? Thank you. Any discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. Nine F, approval of new job description and position preschool teacher. Mr. Collin? Public comment on this item, Ms. Osborne? Thank you. Mr. Collin?
Thank you. So with the district's expansion of a general education preschool program, we bring forward the or approval of the position of preschool teacher. CSEA has approved the position corresponding job description through the 610 process. And it was ratified by the chapter 131 members at a recent business meeting. So the position will be eight hours per day and placed on the 10-month work calendar, 217 days, on range 38 of the classified salary schedule. The anticipated cost for the salary and benefits for two preschool teachers is expected to be up to $216,807.20. Staff requests that the board approve the preschool teacher position and job descriptions. Just so point of clarification, it is a range of A through F. So if they come through with at least, need at least 11 years of experience in a similar role to qualify for the highest step. And again, the the salary is highest possible salary is estimated $82,000 plus $25,000 for benefits, depending on what plan they take, which to those preschool teachers equates to roughly $216,000. And just to note, currently, we have 25 families enrolled. They they paid the nonrepentable deposit and completed the the online registration process. So we're excited about that. And our goal was to have 30, so about approximately 15 students per class. So with that, to hear if you approve.
Thank you. Questions? Ask for a motion, please? Thank you. Discussion?
I think you guys will find some great candidates. Yep.
Thank you. Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. Nine G, approval of new job description and position instructional assistant preschool. Public comment on nine G? Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, President Vickers. So yes, as I stated before, with the district's expansion of general education preschool, we bring forward for approval the position of instructional assistant preschool. Again, CSEA has approved this position and corresponding job description through the 610 process and ratified by the members. This will also be an eight-hour day placed on the 10-month academic. So it's 209 workdays on a range 22. The anticipated cost for this, for salary and benefits for two of the preschool aides is expected to be $159,135.14. And again, highest possible step would be a salary of approximately $54,000 with the subsequent benefit cost of 25. So those two positions combined at the highest amount, highest range would be $159,000. So we ask for the board to approve these positions as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion, please? Any discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. Nine H, approval of retirement incentive program, California State Teachers Retirement System. Public comment? Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, President Vickers. So at the January 23rd, 2024 board meeting, the board approved Resolution 2402, authorizing the district to permit members of the California State Teachers Retirement System retire between June 15th and August 15, 2024, to receive up to two years of additional service credit at the time of retirement. So district can certify that participation in their retirement incentive will result in a net savings for the district. We did have two individuals apply for this incentive. And without, with not replacing one of them, it gave clear expected savings of over $3,000.
Thank you. Questions?
Two. Didn't quite get as many as we anticipated, but.
No. Okay. Then a motion, please? Thank you. Any discussion? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. Nine I, approval of the Public Agency Retirement Services, PARs, supplementary retirement plan for certificated non-management, certificated management, classified non-management, and classified management employees. Any public comment on nine I? Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, President Vickers. So also at the January 23rd board meeting, you also approved the offering of a second retirement incentive from the PARs. This is an annuity that would provide 70% of their final salary put into, again, put into annuity with specific life, and they would have up to 15 different ways to pull on that money. So again, the goal of the of the program is to generate savings at the minimum. And again, we did, we had eight individuals who did sign up for this this program. And the post-analysis is showing a savings in year one of 230, over $236,000. By year three, a savings of over $695,000 and approximately $1.1 million in savings over five years. And that's assuming we're able to non-replace two of the individuals and then replace the remaining six. So at this point, we asked the staff, where staff recommends the approval of the implementation of this PARs retirement plan incentive.
Any questions? Motion, please? Any discussion?
That's a significant saving. So thank you for doing the work to offer this this plan again and promoting it well, advertising it well, communicating it well, to bring some financial savings to our district.
And not just financial savings. I know you've made some of those people very happy.
When are the retirees announced publicly? Do they self-announce or is there?
Well, we have our recognition event in June. So that's when we'll officially do that. And then, but they will appear on a personal report in the near future.
Thank you.
I have a motion. She's, it's just, it's catching up with me. So student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. We move to section 10, Instructional Services Action Items. 10A, approval of the 2024-2027 District Triennial Plan for Providing Educational Services for Expelled Students in Alignment with the Countywide Plan. Do we have any comment on 10A?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Per ed code 48926, since 1997, county superintendents of schools have to create, it's this triennial plan for each of the counties. And then within each of those counties, they create a model plan that the districts then approve. So we are approving this one after we did one three years ago. This is the next iteration of that. All schools across Orange County will be doing the same. And really, it's just about ensuring this continuum of services as students are, that are in high need, are receiving services, alternatives to suspensions, other means of corrections, all the way up to being expelled, and have that continuum of support and and discipline across schools and into the county. And so we just bring forward this plan, this model plan, that we are in alignment with the county plan for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Ask, motion, please? Discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye opposed, carries five oh. 10B, approval of agreement with Institute for Multisensory Education, IMSE, to provide in-person morphology plus training for teachers and staff during the week of August 5 to 9, 2024. Is there a public comment on 10B? Thank you. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. So this item, since this item comes forward around, are related to our structured literacy program. Since 2016, the district has had an action plan to address reading disorders and especially in the area of dyslexia. And so at that time, a work group decided to work with this nationally recognized program around multisensory education, MC for short. This is part of all the different things where they were doing assessments and tier one instruction, tier two instruction, tier three instruction. But this method is is a structured literacy approach, where there's a very clear, explicit sequential set of of learning that the students do. Last year, the board kindly approved the the first iteration of this, which is the comprehensive one, which is for primarily for lower grades. This one is primarily for more upper grades, grades two and up. And so we're bringing this forward so we can do training with them in August, in person, a five-day training. Where our, as part of our structural literacy program, we ensure that all elementary student, all elementary, all elementary teachers, special education teachers, IAs are all trained in this. So this is really important to have this in person for our teachers. And so we're excited to to bring this forward and do the second part of this, of that training this summer.
Thank you. Any questions? Like a motion, please? Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? It's a great offering to our staff and to ultimately benefit the students. Those are really some tough things to deal with as a student. Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye? Aye opposed, carries five oh, thank you. 11A, approval of February 13th, 2024 Board Policy Workshop Minutes. Do we have comment, public comment on this? Okay. Probably comment on 11A? Thank you.
Am I correct that these, this is for approval of the amendments of the study group or the study session you all had on board policies? Yeah. I was there, and it's good to see everybody. And, you know, I found the experience to be interesting. I enjoyed the comments and discussion. But, you know, I think if you're going to do one of these workshops like this, again, you know, it was, it's kind of like, on one hand, it was conducted as if it was a, an open meeting of the board for purposes of the public comments. And yet, the discussion was really sort of about the internal mechanisms, mechanics, and dynamics of the of the board. And to the extent that actual policies and 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 the governance process were discussed, you know, I, I, I think there are serious problems with the governance process that it would be good to have more workshops. You know, I think, you know, for example, I listened to some of the comments by the board council. Board council made some good comments on a couple of points. I thought it was interesting when he said, if you're going to, if you're going to let, if you can let people clap for you or clap, then you also have to let them boo and whatnot. He, he made some good points about that. I don't particularly agree completely with what he said, but I thought he, but I thought on some other points, he gave really inaccurate information about how the Brown Act works and what is and is not allowed under the Brown Act and required under the Brown Act. I think this board, and I think probably a lot of boards in, and a lot of city councils, need a lot more work on understanding the Brown Act. Because, for example, people talk about violation of the Brown Act. Well, there is no such thing as a violation of the Brown Back. There's Brown Act. There's either compliance or non-compliance. Most meetings are not 100% perfectly in compliant, in compliance. The Brown Act provides the remedy. If if somebody is not in compliance, you can go to court. But there's no like violation. The only thing in the Brown Act that constitutes a violation is there's one section in there that has a misdemeanor crime in it. And that's if the board member attends a meeting and acts with the intent to deny the public with information that's required to be made public. And yet, everybody's running around talking about violations of the Brown Act. It happens down at the city council, it happens up here. And in fact, it's a misunderstanding of the Brown Act. And the council, and some of the comments he made was reinforcing that misunderstanding. But anyway, the point is, I think that the, that we should have more of these, and we should talk about, be good to talk about how to structure them so that the the public's interest in governance can be addressed with a more focus than that meeting, which was pretty much focused on your internal dynamics and how you organize yourselves. And so those are my comments.
Yes. Yes, come on up. And just before you do it, President Vickers, after this, could we adjourn for like a three or four-minute bio break? After this? Yes, take a recess to a three or four-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been about four hours in the chair.
So thank you for the opportunity. I wouldn't like to add on to that. Having been before you for many years, I do recall a time where there were study sessions done that were focused on Brown Act, that were focused on policy, where the public was invited. In fact, members of the administration and board reached out to me specifically, said, you should come. It would be great. Your input would be welcome. And there was actually the opportunity to make comment from the audience because it was a study session. It wasn't a board meeting in the sense of the structure. All five of you were there. But it was an opportunity to have some input. Now, maybe it wasn't following the protocol to the T, but it was much more of a of an amicable situation where there was give and take in conversation. And I think there was a comment made earlier that I wrote, and I would probably should go get it. But it was, I really liked how it was, you know, if we, if we don't, there's a lot of different perspectives, right? And if we don't have the answer, I think actually Mr. Vidal said it. He says, you know, I don't have all the answers. But, so if I listen, one might appear. And I think that was such a profound statement to be made, especially to all of you, because sometimes you don't have all the answers. But it it seems as though you're very insistent that you do. I know, Madam Vickers, regularly, you have said, you've changed your position a lot and said that, you know, as the, when it was challenged on whether Member Perry should be president or not, you said, well, it doesn't matter because as the president, we just, all we do is run the meeting and, you know, and that's it. There's really no authoritative power to it. However, board policy and ed code states that as as the president of the board, you help make the agenda, you decide what goes on the agenda and what doesn't go on the agenda. Now, as a community, we are allowed to ask to have things on the agenda. But I I know in my many, many years of being in in the boardroom with you, it's going to also depend on whether or not you like what I have to say. So it's, it is. So it's, it's, it is an unfortunate situation because I think some of the hostility from the community is created by the board. It's not because the community wants to be hostile. It's not because they want to be confrontational. It's not because they want to have any kind of animosity with the board that it helps to decide how to educate our children. I mean, again, like I said, when the evening started, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think it was really important. I have many other things at home that I would much rather attend to. But you have been, you know, awarded this responsibility. And when you treat people like angry parents instead of concerned citizens, you have said that we are angry parents when we didn't open the schools in twenty twenty-one. You said it's just a group of angry.
Are there any other speakers on this item?
Thank you. So it's up to you.
Just a point of clarification. This was actually for board policy workshop, not for the meeting they are referencing, but.
It was policy. We had a few bylaws at the end, but it was not a Brown Act.
It wasn't the Brown Act, right? So this, Ms. Osborne, you weren't present, so we just needed to make sure you abstain from this minutes.
Yeah, what we need, after we pass this, we need to have a motion and.
For you. Yep.
Motion and a second, please? Okay. Thank you. We'll give you more than a second.
Just so you get a vote.
Yeah. She has to abstain.
No, but they need to vote still.
Yeah, they do. But she asked me, wait a second. Oh.
Sorry. You got a little punchy, it's not a.
Yeah, all in favor and student vote. He voted all in favor. I at one extension. Thank you. Okay. Because we need to go.
You want to take a key? Or are you going to go in here?
Okay, thank you. We're ready to get back to our business. We have can twelve is a consent calendar. Do we have public comment on twelve on the consent calendar?
None received.
Thank you. So, board members, do you have any items on the consent calendar that you would like to poll, C through O? Dr. Kelly? No. And so then I would ask for a motion to approve consent calendar items, C through O. One second. Okay. Thank you. Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? I oppose. Carrie's five oh. Thank you. Move to section thirteen, governance. Our first item is thirteen A, approval of amended employment contract for the superintendent. Do we have a public comment on thirteen A?
Yes, Sheri Morgan, please come to the podium.
Thank you. So these contracts are always really interesting because, especially at the administration level, you have that evergreen contract where every year you get to add on another year. And and the wording is so loose that it's, you know, there's, they get to have another year added to their contract, assuming there's no, I don't know, complaints? There's no, because I'm struck, I'm struggling as a community taxpaying member, a member, a taxpaying member of the community, to understand what the guidelines could be, that a contract would continue to extend to four years when we're still looking at a current year. For example, this year, our math scores are down overall another seven percent. There were fifty percent meeting standards last year. This year, they're fifty. Our enrollment has dropped from, you know, twenty, I think it's twenty, what is it, twenty-three hundred to twenty-two hundred? I think, I mean, the high school data, I'm very sure on it was nine fifty last year. It's eight eighty this year. And when I looked at the trends of the enrollment, it was dropping eight percent, seven percent, six percent for the next, all the way down to kindergarten. So that's just going to roll through. So here we've got this project before us. It's a nineteen million dollar pool that all night it has been stated that it was assumed that the city was going to join us. And the city was very clear that the negotiations were met with, regardless of what is being said here, the recording from the city will state that we met with the superintendent and Madam Vickers and Madam Osborne, and they were not willing to negotiate. We're building a fifty-meter pool, and that is it. And now tonight, you're stating that we assumed that they would go, that they were going to partner with us. Now, the city came back and said that it would be understood in a joint use agreement that we, the city, if we contributed money, we would be able to have some voice in the design elements of this pool so that the pool met the community needs. Then the city comes back and says, but we were told that even if we contributed money, they're building a fifty-meter pool. It doesn't matter. So now you're here with a contract before you that you're going to approve because I've been or I've been on this story for fifteen years, and every year it gets approved. It doesn't matter what the data says. So at what point does recall come into play? Because there is no accountability for the performance of our district. You guys just keep extending contracts and keep offering money. There is no accountability. So how do we get around that? How does this change? How do we get a district that the community feels is being heard instead of just continuing to shovel out money for mediocre, mediocre, mediocre results? Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
It's like Steve Martin in that movie, went on the Santa Monica freeway and the lights, the signs on the side started giving him personal messages. This thing up here is like the sign on the side, the Santa Monica freeway for me. Yeah, I'm very mindful of what Mr. Kelly said about kindness, you know? And it's it's difficult to not be angry. I just spent four years in Washington, and I got so tired of anger, I've lost my capacity for anger. But you still, you know, you get, you get emotional and you and you talk about issues that you care about. And so it's like, you know, how do we talk about things that are difficult and not appear to be angry and not appear to be unkind? You know, I think that, going back to my earlier point, it's interesting because the job of the, one of the jobs of the president of the board is to make sure the bylaws are enforced. Well, there was a bylaw in effect back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen that said that the the president's position would rotate. And the board violated that. And in fact, I think in the meeting where they decided to violate that, I think they also actually committed a misdemeanor under the Brown Act. But that's water under the bridge or ancient history. But the point is that, you know, then they later changed that by law and got rid of it. So you no longer have, you know, see, the purpose of these local legislative agencies under the Brown Act is that they be nonpartisan. But what's happened to the nonpartisan model in the legislative agencies is that the school board here did something, and now the city council has followed the school board's bad example and, you know, got rid of the rotation of every member through. And so you no longer have real diversity, and you have kind of de facto political parties. The majority becomes a de facto political party at the point where the minority doesn't get to rotate through the providing officer's position. And so then what happens, what's happened after they stopped doing that rotation is then they start having their lawyers, both at the city council and both here and now at the city council. They use the lawyers to silence the minority members by saying they're violating the Brown Act when they're not violating the Brown Act. So you've got kind of an anti-democratic dynamic that's been institutionalized here. So then it comes time to approve the superintendent's contract. And people, with good reason in many cases, blame the superintendent for a lot of what's going wrong in the governance process. And so I think that's one of the reasons why people want to question, you know, this, the contracting process. I also believe, again, I'm not trying to be unkind, but, you know, the superintendent that we have right here was a judge by a California court at the trial level and appellate level, having violated the rights of a student. And those are part of the legacy that one gets evoked again when we get up and talk about this. So it's not anybody trying to be unkind or.
Thank you. I see no other speakers. President Vickers?
Thank you. I have it in here. Yeah, I got it. Right. Yeah, I need to read this as part of this item. The superintendent shall also receive any increases given to the administrative unit based on the results of negotiations. Any such upward adjustment shall be in the form of a mutually agreed-upon written amendment, and shall become part of this agreement. The board reserves the right to increase the salary of the superintendent at any time. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the superintendent will receive a one-time payment of one and a quarter percent, one point two twenty-five percent of base salary in the amount of four thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents in accordance with the compensation package provided to the classified and certificated management group. So we have, I need a motion. Excuse me. You have a question, do?
Yeah, I I just want to clarify it, and we talked about this before. We have that in place. So really, there's no, voting is a formality. You can't vote no on this.
You can always vote no, correct? I mean, can't you? You have voted no before.
Yeah, but I think she's saying that if she voted no, there's a contract here, and we can undo the contract. So she's wondering if the voting is necessary.
If you had a board that decided to vote with a majority against it, then you're getting into violating a contract. That's the issue. Not that it couldn't happen, not that it doesn't happen, but I mean, there are adversarial situations where something like that could happen. So there are consequence. Yeah, there are, but it's a lot of consequences to that. Right, right. Second. Any discussion?
Am I right that this is common practice as far as the year throughout, and maybe even requirement?
Is it, what's being voted on tonight has nothing to do with what the speaker was talking about. What's voted on tonight is simply as we did for every other group, was apply one point two five.
No, I I understand that. I was just saying.
The other component is correct.
You're right, yeah.
You mean another district.
It's it's either, it's either common practice or it's a requirement.
It's common practice.
It's common practice as far as.
But we just have to do it. We're required to do it separately for Dr. Valoria, where the others was done as a group. Those are the three that we did earlier.
That's as a result of the Bell scandal, if you recall.
Yeah. And so this is still discussion, right?
Yes.
I I just want to point out that I had the privilege of going to the statewide meeting of the school districts, and I attended the meeting concerning superintendents. And they had former, they, it was just an impressive meeting. And we're just so lucky having this superintendent. I mean, the Beverly Hills School District, which was very similar to our district, I forget, in the same period of time, has gone through like five superintendents and five of the the people underneath of him. And the amount of money, time and effort that they've lost has just been outrageous. And so the stability that we have here, I think, is wonderful. I'm sorry that you have to put up with some of the criticisms that occur. I think you're doing a great job and having, having been in administration and having tried to keep all of the balls up at the same time and having to deal with, I I had a very dysfunctional board. I consider, I consider us to have a very good board. But thank you for my pontification.
And those are not just water polo balls, right? You're a good sport. Okay, any more discussion? And student vote? Thank you. Board members on in favor? I oppose. Carrie's five oh. Thank you. We have our thirteen B approval of up to seven delegates for the California School Board Association, CSBA, twenty twenty-four delegate assembly election. And this, I have no public comment on this item, correct, Kelly?
Anna Carrie. Nobody left in the room for the record that is in the public.
Even staff's all gone.
Dr. Kelly, you've turned it over to.
Victoria's going to read who I have recommended, and I have thoroughly researched and and every way I could find information and talk to people other than the board members and would like to support this slate.
There are no contracts involved, right?
Dr. Kelly recommends Lauren S. Brooks, incumbent Irvine Unified School District, Carol Crane, Newport Mesa Unified School District, Candace Candy Kern, incumbent Cypress School District, Deanna Miller, incumbent Brea Olinda Unified School District, Annori Randall Trejo, incumbent Anaheim Union High School District, Barbara Schulman, Saddleback Valley, sorry, Saddleback Valley Unified School District incumbent, and Jonathan Stone, Testan Unified School District.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add or, okay, you edited already, right? Any questions?
I just wondered if for Gosborne knew any of these people.
Yes, why don't we make a motion in a second, and we can go into discussion?
Motion, please?
Second?
Okay.
Uh, yes, so I have personal experience working on delegate assembly with Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Crane, Mrs. Kern, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Schulman, and have no, no objections to the other two delegate candidates. All of them would be great additions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Student vote? Thank you. Board members on in favor? I oppose. Carrie's five oh. All right, we move to our policies, first reading of our policies. We have thirteen C approval of first read of board policies in the OT series. So do we have any discussion or any? This is our first, first reading at the workshop, but that's, they come as a first reading and then a second reading. So we bring them back as for a second read. We didn't, do we vote on these this time? Okay, so we need a motion to bring them back for a second read on the, on this series. We do each one.
But you don't, you support, we have them at some point individually, so then you, it was each one.
Right, we're doing.
So you got all those zeros and ones.
We are doing it as a group, yep. Second read, right? Thank you. Yes, wait, second, there are just a couple of them. Okay, student vote? Board members all in favor? I oppose. Carrie's five oh. I didn't ask for discussion, but if you have a comment, you can insert it. Then next, we have thirteen D approval of first read board policies in the one thousands. Similar, same situation. Thank you. Any discussion? Student vote? Thank you. All in favor, board members? I oppose. Carrie's five oh. So we have E approval of first read of board policies in the three thousand series? Thank you. Their second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Yes. It was a different policy. It's, oh, okay.
No, it's existing. So it's existing so that you're aware of what's actually in the policy. Because so the the policy recognizes that the food service program should give priority to serving unprocessed foods, fresh foods and vegetables. But it has a lot of the things that were requested to be added, not necessarily the exact language that was being recommended. But it has the, what we both thought kind of encompassed what the intent was of the language. So it's there simply for your review. If necessary language was, wants to be added, we can add that and bring it back for a first read. So it's there simply for your review. If necessary language was, wants to be added, we can add that and bring it back for our first read.
You know, Mr. Dixon, what that would, okay.
Yeah, off the top of my head, we'd have to look further. It's not a second read, because it's already approved. So we can't move to a second read, it's hard, there's no changes, there's nothing to change. Correct?
Back on, sorry. F approval of first read of board policies in the four thousands. Thank you. Any discussion? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye, opposed. Carrie's five oh. Go to G approval of first read of board policies in the five thousands.
So on this one, if you recall, five one one sevens inter-district enrollment, we will be bringing back some further information to the board on that one. So you're, again, you're not approving that, because there's no changes to that. Staff will be presenting that in relation to, as was discussed, you know, changing the inter-district policy to allow.
Researching school twice type.
Researcher school a choice, and there's currently some legislation that's being proposed that allows students to transfer to any school. So we'll see where that goes. So, yes, that's to, to come. So you're not approving that for a, a second read, that's already approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion other than that? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye, opposed. Carrie's five oh. H approval of first read of board policies in the six thousand series? Any discussion? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye, opposed. Carrie's five oh. We move to approval of first read of board bylaws in the nine thousand series. Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second it. So any discussion? Student vote? Board members on favor? Aye, opposed. Carrie's five oh. Move to governance reporting. Board member reports? No report. Thank you.
Ooh, I didn't expect that. Let's see, I'm being timed. I went to get the timer.
You are supposed to. I had a minute, boy, you gave your report.
I, along with President Vickers, I attended the, on March fourth, the Flow event for open mic poetry, and boy, they had some fabulous poems on the earth, on animals and, and plants that were very clever and well done and a dance. The, it was tough being on Coast Highway, because it was hard to hear, but it was wonderful that Jedidiah Coffee let us do that there, and students also had some great artwork there. On March sixth, we had our CCA board meeting, and Dr. Weir is, as you know, probably is resigning on June first. So we'll be choosing someone else. They had to make a lot of budget cuts, but they've done that very thoughtfully. They were, one of the things that you're looking at is how to get more students involved in cybersecurity, because it's a good field right now, but not many students interested in it. March seventh for Arbor Day, I attended, and it was fun to see a lot of our kids planting the tree and getting, they got bonsai trees as their award for the ones that were chosen for their beautiful tree artwork. I've been attending, or I've been participating in legislative Zoom meetings for CSBA for action on a number of different items, you know, not moving the Prop ninety-eight money, small school districts. Anyway, I got to speak with Diane Dixon, which was fun. Today I spoke with Matt Kern, who mentioned Dr. Valoria, he was with Dr. Min, he wanted to make sure that the AB, which one was it I was speaking on? AB thirteen fifteen wasn't going to cause you any more work, because he was, didn't want you to have too much work. He was worried that that's the one where they're cutting down on paperwork. No, that's the one for small school districts where they want somebody in the State Department to help small school districts with facilities. And he wanted to make sure that it wasn't involving more paperwork for small districts. And we talked about sixty percent of our thousand school districts in California are small and need help. And then, let's see, I attended the High School Play, Mean Girls. Chase was fabulous, singing and dancing, as was everyone else. I highly recommend it. I heard some complaints about there not being a play bill. You know, nothing to read about the students or follow along, you had to put it on your phone, and then there's lights while their kids are trying to sing and dance. Didn't, wasn't very good. I, I don't know if that was a financial thing. I, I know it did save a few trees. Also, not having any ticket sales there, people came, because before you could go to a box office and buy tickets, and now you can't do that. So there was no way to take money or let them in. So, you know, some things to work on there. One good thing, Laguna Tunes, I'll just finish my little sentence, Laguna Tunes, some of their people came, and they are doing the same number that you guys did as your last number in their spring concert. So they're hoping some of you will join with them, which would be pretty cool. Kind of our, our community school connections. That's it.
Always impressed with them. The superintendent really summarized a lot of what they did. I can't believe that, I think, Thurston, was it fifty-seven thousand? Yeah, I mean, it was just incredible that they've raised this type of money, and hats off to them. And I have researched these awards that were given out by the county, and I found out that Julie and Victoria won one. And so I just wanted to congratulate you on, on behalf of the board members. I know that they were all, I was going to bring flowers, but I forgot. And so you can get them sometime in the future. That's my report.
I have no report except to add my congratulations to Victoria and Julie. It was great, Dr. Hatchell, I should say.
Thank you. I agree with that, and I already congratulated Victoria briefly, but Julie left. So anyway, I'm glad that we have employees recognized in that category on that level, and we know the great work they do for us. The career fair was great. I thought the career fair was really interesting, and it's interesting to see students in careers who were students here. In fact, Otte, who's now in another fire department, said that Laguna should have a room for all the people that, you know, want, could teach something. Then they, you know, if we have an extra room at the high school, he'll use it. And it, we, because I had Ryan Guer there doing architecture and a number of the lifeguards, you know, were students that came through our programs. As Dee mentioned, the CCA meeting is really quite interesting, because the, there's an interest by the superintendent capital to change the JPA. And part of that has to do with who evaluates the person that becomes the director of CCA. And so those, that change will come to our board and go to their board. It doesn't really get voted on by the CCA board, it gets voted on by the two districts, but that will be coming. And there was more concern in capital, they, they reduced six sections for next year of courses. But they have, their enrollment is declining also, and particularly in middle school, the enrollments at a number of schools were, had decreased. And then they will be asking for more pass-through from each district, which is to be expected, because they, they are going to be shorter funds based on what the state is doing. There's, that's where the concern comes from. As Dee also mentioned, the, went to the Flow program at Jedidiah Coffee, it was interesting, because so there's a lot of traffic flow at that time of the night, and I'm not sure they anticipated that, and that was a little bit tough. But former calculus teacher Gary Shapiro was there to play backup for some of the students, and John Shin was there, and he sang with a song he'd written. It was a really nice production. And if you have, if you go to the dance performance in, at the end of April, you will see Jen Merritt's daughter, who is beyond flexible. She danced to a lot of the things the students did. It was very, it was really nice. And there's another event coming up at the end of the month that will be at the Rivian Theater. And then I did, this, this was actually, I wrinkled it greatly, but they had a poster made up for their flow night, and they had little booklets with their poems in them that you could pick up. And then I attended our spring into learning for the early childhood at the Suzuki Center last, I think it was last Saturday. And they have parents come, and they have a lot of the different schools there, the libraries there, Lake Shore Toys is there, and it's a, it's a really nice thing that, that we put on. So, did I make it? Dr. Valoria, I'll give you my.
Just, just two things. One, tomorrow, we will be meeting with all of the local legislators. Superintendents around the county are hosting them at the County Office of Education. And to remember Perry's point, one of the topics that I'm presenting on, as well as a fellow superintendent, is the redundancy in paperwork and the amount of paperwork that we have to do regardless of size. And Garden Grove Superintendent gladly sent over four paper boxes worth of reports that they sent to the state last year. As just one example of the massive amount of reporting that the state requires. And I don't necessarily think that legislators understand when they pass things that have report requirements to the extent that, you know, the goal was to move away from that with the LCAP, and instead we're back to actually having more. So. And, correct. And then, and then people wonder why it is we need to have some staff at the district office, well, when we have all these reports to write, it's extensive. So, so with that, Dr., it will be interesting tomorrow, we'll see. Obviously, most folks were talking about budget cuts, so that's going to be a high focus tomorrow. And last, but definitely not least, you know, just super appreciative of Victoria and all the work that she does to maintain this rowdy group up here, all of us, including these two, without flowers or candy. But we will, we will honor Victoria, both at the June event, but also at the May AXA event, which is the administrators' event, there's a special dinner that, at the Marriott. So, again, well deserved, we super appreciate everything you do. I know the board, I'm speaking on behalf of you, and I see a lot of head nods, so that's good. But just, just so grateful, so.
You've been here a long time. It's really, I, she gets an award just for scheduling meetings and meshing everyone's schedule. That, that's, that's not easy at all. Yes, well, we're, thank you. Second for that. Student vote? Yes. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. It was a long one.